Did she take your pen from you?
I did.
He wanted me to refinance his house. Take a pen. Okay, perfect. I'd like to call the Dover School Committee meeting of May 20th to order.
Can you note the time?
Yes, oh yes. It's at 6:33. Our minute taker is going to watch the tape, just so if you think that we're still talking. We don't have a minute recorder tonight, so he's going to watch the tape and record the minutes.
Valerie?
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I was really into the minute taker there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Johnson. This is an opportunity to thank you for the service that you've provided to the Dover School Committee, and also to the rest of the Sherborne and the Regional School Committee and the work that you've done, both in serving on the negotiation team, and also on the technology advisory, and also the MOU for salary and the compensatory ed. I think what I appreciate most, and I don't know how many of your fellow school committee members know this, but I think what I really appreciate most is when you knew that there was a child that needed a little special help in Chicaring, you'd stop by my office in the wee hours of the morning and say, Valerie, I just need a minute. Are you aware of this situation? And sometimes I wasn't, and I really appreciated that because then I could swing by the school and check in, and check in with the teacher, with the principal, and that's really what it's all about. And you led us to a new area in special education that we invested in and did some exploring, and we all learned a little bit more about students that have difficulties that are extremely bright. And it will take us a while to figure out how to work with that particular type child, but you opened that for us. And so, on behalf of the district, we want to present you with a little remembrance, and hope that you will also think about these contributions as you're raising your own children, to know you really, you touched a nerve with all of us, and thank you so much, Carl.
Well, thank you.
And you get up.
Thank you.
And again, I think you also for agreeing to jump on this with me. I hope you'll still be my staff. Oh, fair slash words. I know, but then you had to go sign up for negotiations, and I would die.
It's not that much time.
Exactly. And Tim passed along his appreciation also. He said that was the one comment that I contribute to him tonight in his absence, so.
Well, thank you.
Please know that we all definitely value your service, and we'll miss you at the table.
Much appreciated. I think the school's definitely in a great spot with all of you guys here to help guide it. And Valerie, good luck to you and your future endeavors, and it's been, it's been a fun, fun three-year time. Thank you much.
You have to smoke, Carl. And, you know, sometimes the very, very best is when you have somebody that looks at things through a little different lens and forces you to think out of your own comfort zone and to look at things from a little different perspective. And I really appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely.
You certainly helped this superintendent, Carl.
Thank you. Learned a lot from you guys along the way, too, for sure.
Well, that's what it's all about. We are a learning institution, so.
And we welcome you back in the audience if you ever want to stop.
Particularly if we're talking about schedule.
We could learn really fun like that. Exactly, exactly. Okay, well, thank you, Carl. Okay, moving on to just the routine business, we have minutes from March 11th to approve. Does everyone get a chance to review those minutes? Any additions, edits, changes? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of March 11th?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of March 11th.
All second.
Kristen second, all in favor?
Aye.
I bring to your attention the Regional School Committee minutes of March 5th, March 13th, and April 2nd, and the Sherburne School Committee minutes of March 12th. Any community comments this evening? Okay, then we'll move on to PTO report. Perfect timing.
Slide in there today. Thank you for being here tonight.
Sure.
You were joking earlier that you might not be, so.
Technically on the clock until eight o'clock.
Exactly. So first and foremost, we had a very successful MFA trip. We had 100 students, 30 chaperones. I might add, some of them were actual repeat parents on the bus, which I think all hail to that. The children had, once again, a tremendously fantastic, exciting, culturally diverse day. And we actually have, thanks to Hanka who ran the whole thing, we have framed artwork by the children. And once the incredible art night, which occurs on Wednesday night, once that is done, we're actually going to bring in the pieces and have those hang up as well, so. It's art central here at Chicaring right now. The curriculum enrichment, once again, just plowing through at tremendous speed, superhero levels of authors, activities, and events. Just to name a couple that have gone through, we've got, we had the Potato Hill Poetry come in. And on a personal side, I had poetry offs going on at the dinner table as a result of it. So, thank you so much for that. And they were good, too, by the way. We even had a couple of haikus. I was like, oh my God. There is an Audubon trip for the kindergarten class, which is a third part of the series, and it's a really lovely introduction for them, that they get the local walk-through classroom, they get the trip over at the outdoor conservation area, so it's really quite lovely. And then upcoming on June 24th is the Grade 5 Paul Revere trip, which is sacred in that level, in that grade. They all look forward to that. We had the fundraiser, which was in conjunction with the PMC. And this year we did something different. We did an off-site, so the children, they did a $20 donation, and they got to see The Crude, which is the hot, I'm sure you all know that, the movie to see right now. And so that was a nice tie-in to bring the community together, as well as obviously raising some money for cancer. The Teacher Appreciation Day just passed last week. There were plans for the teachers. There was a luncheon, and then there were multitude of activities that were handled by the room parents. And there was almost like a little friendly competition, if you will, decorating the doors with different stars and words and different influences that the children have received from their teachers on an ongoing basis this year. And so it was a nice personalized thank you back, which was really quite nice. There was coffee and breakfast pretty much in every single room, and I think that adequate spoiling was achieved. Okay, so the town meeting, no surprise to any of you, but I just wanted to bring it up. $27.5,000 was voted through. I held my breath, but it was voted through. And I just wanted to say thank you so very much, because it was a trip outside about, almost a year ago, where we took a look and saw the conditions and the problems in terms of the flooding and the pavement, and the police cruiser tire marks on the playground area. And so that has been voted through, and it's going to make a majestic difference in the playground. So thank you so very much for your support in that, and your openness and your willingness to take a little walk and to see what was needed. Learning, so, I just wrote a little bit down here, if you're with me. So, the mandate that Heather Tortolot and I had chosen as co-presidents going into the 2012-2013 school year was learn and play. And we feel that with the backing and support of the school committee, that that is something that has most definitely been achieved for us. And so, as I'm about to ride off into the sunset, see you there. I just wanted to.
I'll keep the lights on for you.
I just wanted to say that, just as a quick little regroup, we had our, we raised a record amount in our No Big Big Sale, which is our fundraiser, non-event fundraising year. The Phase 1 of the playground renovation was in seamlessly, pretty much, most of it by September, by the beginning of school, so we're a back-to-school picnic. We had it up here on the Chicaring Field for the first time to bring the community together, to celebrate the changes and the new year. And it was really well-received. We have now the Plinko Ball, the DNA climber is still my all-time favorite. On soccer mornings, I've actually been on it. There's a new slide, which always has a lineup in front of it, a map of the US on the pavement outside the Grade 2, Grade 4, 5 door, which is about to get a facelift already. The winter was a little cruel to the paint job, so we're getting a new painting on that. There's new playground equipment that we've bought at the beginning, and it's also been replenished throughout the year. And then we have new basketball hoops that are at a different varied height, so everybody has the opportunity to feel the thrill of a slam dunk. And the 2013-2014 PTO budget has just been voted on, and so all systems are go there. Potentially bringing in earlier than expected Phase 2 playground renovation, who knows? I'll leave that up to the incomings. As this is the last official school committee meeting, for me as PTO president, I wanted to personally thank each and every one of you for being so open and warm and receptive and encouraging to all that we tried to focus on for learn and play this year. So thank you so very much. And on that note, before the body gets cold, I'd like to introduce the incoming Chair for Fundraising, Jen Thompson, and she would like to speak to you in regards to next year's auction. Thank you.
Jen, excuse me. Patricia, before we wrap up, would you also extend to Heather?
Who is, by the way, extremely helpful.
We're very, very happy to hear that. Our gratitude, both of you have done a wonderful job. And I remember sitting with Terry in her office and listening to this ambitious playground plan. And I think that you and your organization have done a wonderful job, but I don't want Heather to be forgotten.
No, most definitely. I will certainly pass that on like on route home. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Jen.
Hello, my name is Jen Thompson, and next year I will be the Chair of Fundraiser. Along with me is Christian Sampson, who will also be the President next year of the PTO. So it's our intention tonight to present to you a letter of intent to have next year's auction be held at the Chicaring School. Two years ago, the co-presidents went from the front of the town to get the bylaws changed, and they were able to hold a highly successful event here at Chicaring. Successful as bringing the community together, over half of the Chicaring families participated in the event, and also it was highly financially successful. So, that being said, we would like to ask for your support to hold the event at Chicaring again. I do want to reiterate that we will work closely with the co-presidents from the previous years. Obviously, they did due diligence with the police, with the fire, with the selectmen, and obviously we will be having those same meetings. No need to reinvent the wheel, so we'll be using them as advisors for the auction. And any recommendations that you can offer to us, we will take them and we will, you know, set them forth, so. Without further ado, if I could.
Great, so there is a motion they're bringing forward, and the big thing is that we're giving them a license for alcohol, to serve alcohol here on the premises on April 5th, 2014.
Actually, Madam Chair, the town is the issuer of the liquor license. But we, you as a school committee are giving the permission for them to hold the fundraiser here, and then they will go ahead and seek, just to keep it real. They'll seek the approval. And I do want to share with all the school committee members that we had a very long and, not very long, a very pleasant visit as we explored the successes of the last go-around, and also the anticipation of the next one, and, oh my goodness, Mr. Bliss, you better be prepared. You better be prepared as the new superintendent, because they're going to be counting on you along with the school committee members, so.
In a good way.
In a very good way.
Bull riding lessons.
Now, they have told me they will not have that bull this time around.
This is approved with a caveat, there's no bull riding.
Can only get better.
Yeah, but I don't know what to come up with.
Exactly, exactly. Can I get a motion for the PTO to use the Chicaring facility on April 5th, 2014, for their fundraiser?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Thank you.
Do you want to sign this one for all our presentee? Jen, I think you need this to take to town. I think your next stop would be to share that with the selectmen.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Moving on, Dr. Nugent, oral language update.
Yes. So excited. Thank you, first of all, for the support that you have provided. And, you know, I think it's bittersweet, Carl, that since this is your last meeting, you get to announce that we officially will be having oral language next to Spanish. And for those who don't know, Dawn and Carl were two of those individuals who were part of the school advisory council that actually brought this from grassroots interest into a more formal setting, so where it is today. So thank you to the two of you, and being your last one, it's like this really, this system really works. We're happy and astounded, actually, I think, to say that our Laura Louder-Romer, who, Dr. Louder-Romer, is our, will be our Spanish teacher for next year. And when the committee began to envision the perfect teacher, Dr. Romer actually checks off every one of the boxes that we have. She's a native speaker, she has taught at an elementary level all the way through high school, understands how to write curriculum, and she sings like a bird. So it was, it was very exciting. So we are, we're pleased that this person is up and ready to go. In fact, if you told her today she could start, she would be here. The other piece to know is that, thanks to a DSEF grant, we were able to find another equally talented person who wrote a wonderful curriculum for kindergarten. And it goes along for those who do not know, they always talk about how do you add kindergarten to a day that's already very full? And one of our mentors with the oral language committee said it's not about adding more to the container, it's all about how you color the water. And so we took that analogy, and what we have created is a curriculum that actually mirrors what we're already doing in kindergarten, and then presents it in Spanish. So if they're learning seasons, for example, they will go through that lesson in English, and then again, they'll have it again so many days later in Spanish. So it reinforces their curriculum already, and, but does it in a targeted language. So we're so very excited and ready to go. Materials to get ordered and set for her, so we're really set. And a special thank you to Mrs. Chase, who had the forward thinking, she's surprised about this, but who was the forward thinking of at Books on the Heart, to actually order several books in Spanish in anticipation of our oral language program. So, and they were snatched up right away, so it was well-received. So we actually have resources in our library already, so it's really very, very exciting. And thank you for all of your support for this. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Which is, I think, another really exciting thing is that we are sharing Dr. Romer with Sherborne.
We are.
Right, now, ideally with one teacher, hopefully that will work out well. But the scheduling, logistics and stuff, you guys.
Yep. Right, we have. Pine Hill's going to have her in the morning, and we get her in the afternoon. And we're just going to keep it clean that way.
Yeah.
So it's, just so you know, it's 20 minutes, four times a week. So it's short little snippets, and for those who were on the committee, we have found that it's, it's a short amount of time over a week is better than one 45-minute a week, because you don't really progress unless you use it and hear it. And it is totally in the targeted language. There may be a few words out, but it's, the kids pick on, pick it up pretty quickly. And then as we move forward, the plan is to go for grades 1 to 5, 30 minutes a day, four days a week. Again, it's not a special, it's part of, it's part of the day. So the classroom teacher stays, the aides stay, and they are invited to participate if they care to. So on the model lesson that we saw when we were trying to make our decision about who to hire among the three finalists, it was very, it was very telling that one of our kindergarten teachers on the floor told me it would happen, and was very happy to do that. And that's really, when we envision how oral language will come into our building, that's kind of how we see it, too, is that the teacher, as well as the students, would be involved, and it would be embraced. We also are very excited to think that now, not only will we be learning that target language, but we'll also be embracing that culture. And so, and as you'll see next month when we bring forth our school improvement plan, that we have begun to look at diversity and look at expanding our view of the world, not just what it may look like here at Chicaring. So it's very exciting.
Dr. Nugent, have you also had any luck with contacting Dr. Romer and inviting her to the joint meeting?
She has been contacted. Mr. Bliss has already reached out to her, and she will be there on the joint committee. So you will get to meet her, so.
And how long will we be able to share her? And then who gets her? We love her.
Good question. I do not have an answer to, so.
But it'll probably be at least two years, it would be.
Roughly, yes, because we're, next year it's a .8, and then after that, I think it's a 1.2? Think we go to, or 1.1?
We'll have to look at the enrollment and see, because that's based on current levels.
Correct.
Right.
So, but it's, it's still doable with part-time. Eventually, you do have to pick a place.
But we were thinking that the main person would probably be like the curriculum leader, so, you know, we, she'd still, the person would still be overseeing everything.
So it might be a part of the school.
Yeah, still, exactly, yeah.
And part of, I think, what she's also, Dr. Romer is also excited about is the fact that it's, it is a program that is starting from a grassroots, and that she will have the challenge and the opportunity to be looking at growing with it and helping it grow, so. Yeah, Dr. Nugent, well done for you and your committee members.
Thank you.
And I'm very, very pleased, having had the honor of meeting Dr. Romer. And I can't imagine any child in either one of the elementary schools that will not be speaking Spanish fluently in kindergarten, because I just, I just can't imagine if those children will not just fall in love with her.
So just to, and full disclosure to the, to the committee, it is the intent of this program, though, to not start a written language until about 3rd, 4th grade. So it's all oral until then. And that's because research shows us that learning any language, whether it's our native language or a second, third language, that it needs to be done orally, and then you build, build to a written language. So, and that really allows for progression to happen at a child's developmental rate, rather than, you know, I don't know how many of you come to Dave's, but I did it for hours, and it never felt like it nearly got me anywhere, you know, until I started using it. And so we, you will be seeing that it would be, it will be oral. It'll be exciting.
Excellent, great, definitely. Okay, tech agreement. So in your packet, you had a marked up, and everything in the yellow was new? Agreement to tech. And we only bring tech, the tech agreement forward to be signed when there's changes. So this will last until there's another change. So I think we've signed it once during my tenure, and that's because Wellesley withdrew from the agreement, from the cooperative, so we had to do a new agreement. And this is all being dictated from the state legislative, legislation over having just increased oversight over the collaboratives because of some issues. Some of the collaborators that weren't tech. And I think if you sit through the tech meetings, you'll find that a lot of stuff that they're requiring now, tech already did. There's a few things they had to tweak, but they went through a pretty thorough audit, let's say, two, two or three years ago, and so they were already on the right track. So the biggest issue with the Dover-Sherborne district is that they're really cracking down on who the voting person can be on the board. And we're in one of those unusual situations where currently they've allowed a school committee member from each district, from each committee, to be there. It's going back and forth whether or not we really had three votes, so. You know, so if it ever came, there was never a vote where there was a session, so. They may let us all vote, but now it's going to be more strictly enforced. And so unless we want to pay dues.
Correct.
As each individual committee, we have to designate our superintendent as our voting member, so that the school committee members cannot be voting members anymore. So financially, that's probably, otherwise it doubles our dues. So it would go from $20,000 to $40,000 for the district if we decided we each wanted our own seat at the table. So that's the biggest change in this for us. I don't know if you guys had any other questions. We are voting on this, my last vote, on Friday. And so we get, you know, I figured we'd just be getting the approval. We wouldn't sign until tech agrees it.
Right.
On a vote on it on Friday.
Well, we do have one that jumped right into it, so.
Okay.
That's why it's here.
Okay, because this, there could be changes.
Is there anything that has come up, it doesn't sound like it, where you have felt like you needed the difference now?
No.
I think that the three districts have pretty much been aligned with each other, and, you know, Dawn has done an excellent job of being present, and so has one of the other schools, yeah. And that has been very helpful. In previous years, we have had all three members. I think the one thing that we can appreciate is that tech has allowed us, for at least on my watch, it did come up when I first came on board, and, you know, being new, it was like, no, no, we can't afford to do three separate, and it was like, no, we wouldn't really ask you to do that. So we've been paying as one district, because our numbers, you know, are rather low. But there have been times I've sat at the Board of Directors' table when Framingham had one vote and we had three. Fortunately, I think we probably all were going in the same direction, but I can understand where they may be coming from on this.
Well, and it's not fair, it's the state that's coming down. Because tech is more than happy to let us continue our, you know, normal mode of operation, but this is the, this is coming from them.
Would you still have a member from each committee that's present at the meetings, or would it just?
You can, they, it sounds like they.
But it wouldn't be required anymore?
Not required, non-voter, but it's still there and participating.
They're being very strict.
Because it's open, because they've been saying it's, you've got to follow open meeting law, so.
But I would encourage.
Anyone can be there, right?
Yes.
Didn't I read through it, that they have to publicize the meetings and follow the meeting law?
But Kristin, the reason that I think it is so important to have, it really is an added burden for the superintendent to have to be at each one of those meetings. Because there's also the job-like meetings, which I would say are equally important for the superintendent to be at, because there's so much that you learn about the neighboring from that perspective, from the superintendent's perspective. I, I think that if you have that, the representation, you have a voice at the table. I don't see that they're trying to eliminate the voice at the table. I think they're just trying to comply with what the state regs are asking them to do. And I think they have been very respectful of the fact that we've had three different districts, and we've had multiple representation. But if you had a big vote coming up, such as we have on Friday, you'd want to let the superintendent know that he would need to be present there to represent you.
Right, otherwise you wouldn't have a vote. Because they cannot delegate their vote to any of us.
Right, right. No, but if any of us wanted to go in addition with the superintendent, you could be.
Yeah, you know, we, I.
But you can't be an alternative.
Right, right. But you can be there for information. And there are certain meetings where they ask us to ask other school committee members. It's not the norm, though. But you could definitely, yeah.
Should it be our practice, right now, each of us have a representation in the tech. Should it be our practice that even though we're non-voting, that we would still do that? And commit to attending and being present?
Yeah.
Just given the ongoing open issues and questions around special ed especially, having somebody with some firsthand knowledge into, you know, how a major provider of services operates, I think is.
Because we still do job-alike meetings, too, and that's by going to those. Like I brought up special ed last, the last job-alike, saying, what can you guys do?
Right.
You should do a survey, and we, you know, there's, could be programs out there that we need that you could be looking into, so they wouldn't discount us, because there's a school committee, job-alike.
But you also have another transition that's taking place there with your leadership. So it would be, I think, very important, aside from what Dover-Sherborne is going through, but also the tech has a new lead.
Right.
So I think that it is important that that voice not be lost.
So I just need a motion to approve the, for us to approve the revised tech agreement effective July 1st, 2013.
I'll make the motion.
Second? Second, can I? Second, can I? All in favor of that? Aye. Okay, and then well, in June, we'll bring the real one to be signed because we'll approve it on Friday. I'll let you know if there's any changes. But I'll go forward and vote the way, you know.
I'm just wondering because Carl won't be there. Does that going to matter, you know, on the vote?
That's still a warrant today, right?
Yeah. Okay, perfect, thank you.
I'm a token vote.
Because it's effective July 1st, so it'll be fine just to have the existing.
Yeah, it can be a token anything call.
Okay, Mrs. Spurgge Superintendent's report.
Okay. Again, thank you for the, to the PTO. We're looking forward to, I don't know, after having my meeting with the two of you, there's no telling what that committee's going to come up with. But I, I know that when you left, I was excited about it. So, the very best of luck to you on that. The full day kindergarten, I do want to thank Dr. Nugent and her kindergarten teachers for pulling together some data that they'll be presenting a little bit later. And Dr. Nugent had some good news about kindergarten enrollment. Sixty-three, I believe, was the number. Okay. And remember, we're in May. So, you know, we, we oftentimes have considerable, not considerable, but influx over the summer.
Can I ask a question?
No.
Just, no. I think after three years, I know the answer to this. When we get the monthly enrollment reports, the numbers that are in the left column, sorry, I'm not looking at the document, that provide a summary by grade level don't tie to the individual classes?
It's the last, it's the previous year's numbers.
Yeah, I think it's got a, there's both.
I accidentally printed one.
There's both eleven and twelve, right? So I'm assuming that's, do we have actually, we do kindergarten?
Yeah, I've got one.
So you've got, I'm assuming this is eleven, twelve, and so you've got seventy here and seventy-one here.
Yeah, but this, this is what it was. It's June, at the end of June of 2012.
Oh, so this is three years. Sorry.
I was going to say, they're showing you where it was last year.
Read the number. Got it.
Okay, that's been clarified.
I tracked the question.
Most of what, most of what I have on my reports are.
Over the summer from here to here? That's a lot.
Yeah. Well, remember, you had thirty you could do.
Yeah, that's right.
Our updates, but I do want you, school committee members, to know that I do have a handout on MOU for salary and after the press tour that I would like you to take and look at over at the joint meeting. Denise Longen will be doing a presentation in executive session since it will be material for negotiations. So I'll give that to you before we leave. And again, just a thank you. I can't imagine any child having a better library than what you all have provided me. And some of the notes that you've put inside the books. And as I look at the books and I'm like, you know, these books tell a lot about the person that did the giving. And I thought that perhaps that evening we had all the books, but I have to tell you that the basket is overflowing because there are additional books that have been sent in. So, the sixteen of you have really outdone yourselves and I thank you so much for your thoughtfulness and consideration. It really has touched our family. And I know there's a little Sawyer Hudson that's going to enjoy hours and hours of good, solid reading. Shall you be proud of your school committee? They all gave me books for my new grandson and they're great books. I think they must have checked in with you before they. I, I think the rest of what I have in my report is going to be covered by other people tonight.
Okay. I was just looking, the only thing is probably the assistant superintendent position. I don't see it subtly on the agenda, so.
Mr. Bliss?
Sure, absolutely. We had sent out a press release on Friday afternoon concerning the naming of Dr. Carol Le Duke as the incoming assistant superintendent of schools. Karen comes, was highly recommended with a decade of experience from the NADA schools where she has served as assistant superintendent. I really want to thank Lauren Doherty for serving on the committee. We had a seventeen-person search committee. We looked at, how many applicants did we look at?
Seventy plus.
Seventy, seventy-three.
But that's not as impressive as how many pages did we read?
Right.
Like twenty-two hundred.
Yeah. Twenty-two hundred pages.
And you've had three great finals?
We did.
Very different.
And Lauren, we really want to thank Lauren for also serving as a concierge when the finalists were all parading through the schools on May, Friday, May 10th. So Lauren volunteered her time and served as a concierge to literally, because we, it was very important that all three finalists had an opportunity to see each of the four schools and the three campuses. And it was a fun-filled day, it really was. Lauren, did you enjoy the experience?
I, it was a privileged experience, honestly, because I, to be able to go to the other campuses, which I've been to as a parent, but, you know, I, I learned a lot as well. And I met administration and faculty that I hadn't met before. And quite honestly, because I was sort of trying to be a fly on the wall, but you're privileged to the information being discussed, so you learn a lot. And it, it was a, I was glad to have been there.
One candidate said only in Dover Sherburne would it be the concierge. You're not just a guide.
That's true, actually.
Not a tour guide or a chaperone?
Living up to expectations yet again.
So Karen, Karen will begin on July 1st and we're, we're just really thrilled. We couldn't have gone wrong with any one of the three applicants. We're very behind. And each was enormously talented and seasoned. And we're just really pleased and proud to appoint Karen Le Duke. She's done exactly the work that we need done for the past decade in NADA, which is articulating curriculum across multiple school buildings and across all core content areas. She'll hit the ground running in July. So thank you, thank you Lauren for serving.
Nice job in the process.
Great. Perfect. Chris, you're up.
Thank you.
Where's that enthusiasm?
I just love this time of the year.
Come on, Chris, this is my last one.
All right, we don't have questions.
Basically, the, what was, doing a projection through the end of fiscal year, we're projecting about a $25,000 surplus in the operating budget.
Oh, wait a minute. Can we vote heating oil before I go?
We, we don't have the bids yet.
Can you come back and do it?
It's all right, that was just tradition. I have to.
I believe it's June 14th. And that, that $25,000 is exclusive of any negative variance, which we're projecting about a $39,000, $40,000 negative variance out of district. Tuition and transportation. Because that's the way basically this committee's been informed and managing the operating budget. Two of the major areas of the favorable variance to offset the salary variances in education, educational transportation, regular ed, transportation, and the oil prices. Even though we had a colder year, we, we ended up doing much better when we did.
Because?
See, you've got me rocked now. I can't even talk.
Because it was almost a dollar difference, right? Between the pound recommended dollar amount and what we paid per gallon.
Wow, that's a lot.
And we actually decreased some of the offsetting increases that because of having that budget.
Sorry.
That's okay. The other area, I'd like to.
Forty-five minutes.
Quickly, at the February joint meeting, the discussion of.
Yes, the payroll.
The payroll was approached. And I'm just asking the school committee to authorize a payment of $5,000 to offset some of the costs that the region has actually incurred. So, there's many benefits to this payroll system and HR system. Just salary projections, budgeting. I've already seen the benefits at the region. It's awesome. And it's really going to help us manage more effectively and better. So I do need an action required on that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve a $5,000 payment to the region to go against the payroll?
No, this is silly question time. It's, we're not going to run parallel systems if we don't vote for this, right?
Right.
No.
Carl, you'd like this.
No, I, I just.
No, we're using a different, I mean, the region's getting full benefit of this. We're only going to get partial benefit, but it's still a benefit worth jumping on.
Because we only do report, report gross wages.
Right.
So do I have my motion?
I'll, I'll motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, perfect. And Sherburne passed this last week.
Yes. So everybody's on board. Because?
Yes. Yeah, we haven't dropped that. You can go.
Can we go before we jump?
Okay.
I just wanted to make, and I don't think that these are new variances. I think these have been there. I just wanted to refresh my memory, if you could please. The curriculum leaders, how come we're not spending that money that we had put away for that?
That was an estimate of, at the time, it was an estimate to have, we didn't have an actual ratio for them at that particular point in time when we did the budget for FY14.
Oh, I thought the seventeen thousand was, because we had thirty thousand budgeted there the year before. I thought the seventeen turned out to be.
But there's only, there were six, now there's five curriculum leaders.
But, but it doesn't even seem like they're.
The curriculum, how many curriculum leaders?
Just know if they've, if the stipend has been.
I think it was reduced because of the moment.
But wouldn't it that have been encumbered?
All right, so we have three and a half. There's your reduction.
Now we have three.
So have we expended all, I mean, has all that been put into the payroll system for those?
Yeah, they can feed out in stipends.
Yeah.
We, we have eight half and then they'll give a half.
But are we supposed to have six?
We didn't know at the particular point in time when we originally budgeted for this. They went from reducing the curriculum director's position to curriculum leaders.
Right, right.
And it was, it was how many and how much at the time. Is this the second, I think fourteen?
This is our second year.
Year two, yeah.
This is year two. Fourteen's year three. Because we had thirty thousand last year.
That's right.
And I thought we expended like fifteen.
Yeah, but we still have, they get paid in two installments. One in December and one in June.
Okay, so there's another probably, so double.
Oh, so, so, so just because there's no encumbrance there doesn't mean we don't have money to be paid?
The new system will encumber those funds.
Okay.
The only thing that's encumbered really is salaries.
Salary. Any, any kind of.
Anything else here?
Stipend that people get periodically, any kind of overtime.
That's not accrued or, okay. So, but are we fully staffed on the curriculum specialists? I guess that's my question. If we, if we had planned for six, do we have six? Or if we planned for three, do we have? That's my question.
We planned for four.
Okay.
And we have three and a half. We had somebody, we had to have an adjustment during the year.
Okay.
But we are planning for four next year.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And then the PD, and maybe this is the same reason, we're not encumbering professional development that hasn't been reimbursed yet. That's like halfway through the line, there's like fifty thousand.
That's the amount you'll see when we paid those vouchers last year.
At the end of the year?
Long enough, fifty dollars. Yeah, and again, that's paid in two installments.
Okay, so that's your son, okay. And then the last one is custodial services. Why are we so favorable there?
The majority, the, majority of it is in the reserve for some of the building projects that have gone back into, you know, for maintenance and things. We may have identified $7,500 to do something on the rooftop. However, once they actually had the inspection, they didn't need to go further with that particular project. And it's generating a significant surplus.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll have some other surpluses probably blow out of here, right? Like our school committee budget.
Well, that's up there.
That's already projected though. What I do is I just do a conjunction where I think based on actual spend for the last quarter of the fiscal year.
Has there been any thought, conversation about bringing forward any items from next year?
Well, our number is so, it's, our real number right now is not very big. So it's a point, twenty, thirty thousand. It may rev.
I'm just looking at the specifically, the capital plan, which gets rather daunting in some areas. To the extent that you can address any of that now, would that not be a reasonable conversation?
Seventy-five hundred for the CDA siding, the restanding of the CDA siding. That's in FY14. I can speak to Ralph about doing two sections of that CDA siding.
It may be worth throwing a dart to the town fathers just to see what their interest level would be. But again, I mean, I, I thought, I recall from some of the conversations that they were a little bit anxious again on some of the out years on the maintenance plan. And to the extent, again, that you can bring any of that forward, why not? Even if it's relatively small compared to past years.
All right. And by June, I'll have a better number too. That twenty-five could come down to twenty or fifteen because it's so small compared to previous years.
But do you have a capacity issue? Because I know that there's, that the HVAC project, you have a lot of work to do to get that rolling.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to share with the school committee, all the town meeting appropriations and the capital projects we're going to have going between the three districts. Myself and Ralph basically manage these projects. In some cases, we have to go through the formal process. In some, it's just a matter of getting quotes. Then Ralph takes it from there as far as the actual projects themselves are concerned, working with the, and there's 21 projects. So, I think there is an issue of capacity. It happened to us last year. And also the window of opportunity, which has shortened this year. Schools not getting out, I believe, until the 26th. And then we also have our routine cleaning of the buildings. So, I think we do have to consider that. Otherwise, we may be picking Ralph up off the floor.
But we can still check on it.
We can check.
Right, and I know, I know Chris has circled.
Just don't say yes to everything if, if, if it's really going to make, make this less successful, the bigger projects.
Okay.
And Chris has circled in with Terry and Deb about any expenses that we can push forward if they have supplied extra money. So I think they have actually done some of the world language stuff and brought it into this fiscal year. So I think they have been looking at that. But we just didn't have a big enough surplus to go looking at too much more again with what we have on our plate anyway.
That's correct. Okay, facilities. There's a memo from Mr. Kelly concerning the power merge surge protector. Just so the school committee understands, when, once these capital articles are approved and the projects are completed, the town accountant will send me a list to say which projects need to be closed out and then close out to the towns free cash. And it helps them clean their books as well as ours. After doing all of his due diligence and based on the project itself, the system actually already has the power surge protector. And he doesn't believe, and that's what this original cost estimate was provided on. So we don't need to go forward with that. And we'd like to close that account out.
But we, but we were able to turn it on and use it. Because that was the concern. Okay.
That was what the engineering study, which costs us about, I think, $3,500, determined in how to operate that surge protector. And the other concern was the notification to the facilities director. Well, that can be done through a telephone relay system.
Okay, because I wasn't sure about where it said about purchasing the required hardware and software.
It's already within the system.
Okay, that's what the old one that we, the one we were going to buy, we had to buy hardware, software?
That's what we believed.
Okay. Okay, so.
So that, that's.
They're just recording this because now we're turning the money back to the town for this project. That's left. So that closes out everything from fiscal year, because we had monies all the way back from 11. So 11 Jean spent, right? 12 she spent. That's what it would have been. Okay, so 13, then we'll turn this back.
That's correct.
And you gave us an update on everything else.
Yes. And the tech oil bid is June 13.
Also go back.
Community comp.
Can you do that next year too?
So now we need to go to the security.
Oh.
Do you want to, I don't know, follow your report or is it on here separately? Everything's like soon. Oh, yeah, that's the next item.
Okay.
Wait, so status, okay, anything on fiscal year 14 budget that you need to report?
Well, Senate Ways and Means has come out, but the numbers are different for each particular, until it's actually voted, I don't think, and it really doesn't affect the chicker.
We don't care about that, just kidding. We do, but it doesn't bother her, okay, we did payroll, so now the security expenditure.
Okay, school committee approved an executive session, security enhancements to the building in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars. There's a, to identify a specific fund, we looked at, now obviously you could use this, but given the surplus only being projected at twenty-five thousand, that's why I said we should go forward with some of the identified source of funding, in case we do get a bill we're not projecting out on. There is a building fund, we, we actually charge revenue or receive revenue for building use, and it's a revolving fund that's established by law and probably was voted by school committee as well as town meeting way before any of us were born. That money goes in specifically for the purposes of building projects, building use, so we identified this as a perfect particular, you know, purpose specific to the building itself to be utilized. The balance is, is a cumulative balance of fifty-one thousand three eighty-eight. If you were to do, utilize, identify this and vote this, your remaining balance would be twenty-nine thousand three eighty-eight. On average, given a particular year, we only generate about eight thousand dollars in revenue for this particular type of activity. So this, to me, has been accumulating for many years, and up until about five years ago, this wasn't even on budget sense, four years ago, it was just on the books of the town side, and then once we started to scrub our numbers and everything, and we reconciled these numbers.
You do?
Monthly now, oh yeah.
And do we, should we have oversight of that process, are these revolving accounts?
They're revolving, okay.
Like food services is on the region's books, I think, isn't it?
No.
We have food services revolving accounts too?
Yeah, you sign warrants, yeah, all those bills that we pay are going through the Dover revolving.
That's why you might have to vote the increase in the fees, because in, if you hadn't, I had mentioned that there's a ten thousand dollar shortfall this year, but you have fund balance that can offset that this year. That will go away if, if we have to charge it, otherwise it gets charged to the chickerings general fund. Any shortfalls in any of your revolving funds, any deficits, go against the chickering general fund.
So how many are, just about how many are there, revolving funds that are chickering?
Three.
Three, so I, when this came up, I asked, I think Valerie, if you pass it on to Chris, for us to start getting balances, maybe quarterly on our statements, just to keep it, because we've, you know, it's been three years and this is the first I've sort of.
You know, the other thing that school committee may want to think about in the future is that because of being a department of the town, the region has this annual audit, and you know, there's a letter that summarizes it, and there's all sorts of information that we're able to go ahead and review with that school committee. Your audit is done by the town, and although you're the largest portion of that audit, we still never get reports back or any type of feedback, and I just think that when you ask about the oversight, Lauren, that, that may be something that is worth requesting. You know, just a summary of the audit, so you can look it over and see, you know, what is it that the town is offering?
Well, I guess I'm wondering if, like, if there was ever any impropriety in the accounting of the revolving funds, who's, but who, whose responsibility does that fall under?
Well, that would come out when the audit was.
Is that a town responsibility, or is that a school committee responsibility? That's the, because I, there's been other towns that have issues.
Well, I think school committee would have to sign any use of those funds, so. Because there are.
You sign off on the warrants that are expending for any purpose.
Anything going, going out, well, except, well, I don't know that, because I don't have, I don't know the accounting for the ins, all the ins and outs, I have no.
But it sounds like if the town does the audit, they would create audit points if there were issues.
Management.
Expenditures out of there without our signatures.
And those would be brought to the school committee for corrective action, so it would be policy changes we'd have to make in order to do that, but it would be helpful to know what the operating practices are around the monies in the first place before we.
Alright, I like your idea of getting a quarterly, just.
Just to keep us, because the third one is a gift fund, so you know, when we accept gifts, it doesn't go in, if you think about where that money goes.
Yeah, always wonder.
So there's revolving funds, so when those gifts, you know, the money's sent, when they spend the money, that's where we need to figure, I never, I don't think we, I'm not sure, we don't pay, I don't really pay attention all the time, so the name at the top.
Because that would be on the account side.
Well, it would still be on a warrant, it would say where it's coming from.
At the top, I believe, and I can look at that.
No, at the top it'll say where it's coming from.
Right, what, what fund is coming from, just so, if you look in the audit report, they're probably lumped though as one, special revenue funds is what they call it, and it could be a combination of town rep, school department, special revenue funds, even towns.
But the gift fund right now is about thirty thousand.
Okay, and that's why we don't have to vote on PTO funding, because that's not going in, the only reason we approve gifts coming in is because it's going into that special account that apparently we own.
Yeah, okay.
Now I understand.
Gotcha. Okay, so let's see, you wanted us to vote the use of those funds.
It certainly seems appropriate.
Kinda nice.
So do I have a motion to approve security-related expenditures in the amount of twenty-two thousand dollars from the building rental revolving funds?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So now we'll accept some money that's gonna go into our gift fund. We have a five hundred dollar, this is an annual grant that we get from the mobile station, can I have a motion to accept the five hundred dollar mobile grant?
Do they just donate it out of the?
No, we apply, apply for it, but there's only, they, they get it from their station and there's only limited groups that apply for it, we seem to always kind of.
And it just goes into the gift fund and we use it for?
Accumulating balances.
For science.
Yeah.
So you know it's there and you can, you apply it against it?
No, I know.
Alright, well, yes.
Second? Yep, second?
Me?
Okay, all in favor of the five hundred dollars?
Sure.
Okay, the next one is, this was actually one of the DSEF grants for the Ames Web, and we had an anonymous person donate the three thousand dollars to cover that grant, so we need to accept that gift.
Ames Web again, I'm sorry.
That is the, it's a testing site, data collection site, it was one of the DSEF grants, actually I looked into it, that was really cool, so.
Does it help with the DDMs?
It could.
Okay.
Not yet.
Not yet, but you subscribe to it on an annual basis, so it will be something that you'll try it out.
And then would that come under the, if you liked it, would put it, work it into the operating budget?
Operating budget, okay.
So this is a trial, a trial membership, is this the one that like Milis uses?
Oh, no, you, yeah, you want to. Please, did this and add, did this type of format for math, handwriting as well?
I have a motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay. Okay, and I'm gonna turn this one over to you, Dr. Nugent, the large globe.
Large globe, okay, so there are pictures.
Which is so heavy, I don't know.
Trying to find it in my packet here. So we have been approached by, you may have recalled with the EBLAST, where we talk about cool globes, and it's an environmental initiative that really chicering, it just falls perfectly with where we are as a community. It asks not what, what aren't you doing enough for the world, but it kind of takes the idea of what can you do for the world to make it a little more energy efficient or a little greener and so forth. So in two thousand and seven in Chicago, we saw a, an initiative down, if you've ever been to Millennium Park in Chicago, but they had several globes that an artist would create a consciousness around in terms of saving water, or as we will see about the globe that's in here, this is about using wind as an energy source. Recycling, being conscious of how much paper is used, there's various themes, and so we have been approached by the cool globes group to consider when we want to get involved. And they came to us now because cool globes are coming to Boston in the middle of August, and so we met with Sarah and she explained why she's doing what she's doing, and we just thought this is perfect for kids, because it gives them a voice on what can they do to, to save our planet. And so all ideas are welcomed, and, and when you start looking at the globes and looking at the themes that really align. So it grew from that conversation to then having some of our students then began to blog, and this is Chase set up and helped them create a safe spot to blog, and about, two of them are middle school students and the others are current elementary students in our building, and they're getting, a lot of people are starting to log on and say, well, what do you mean by shutting up the water when you brush your teeth, or what does that help? They've been raising kids' consciousness, and then that kind of grew as we got closer to the date to Boston, globes from other sites around the world have now been warehoused in Boston, and they had a couple of them which didn't have any homes, and they said, you know, chicering has been the school that has really embraced this the most, would you like a globe? And it is an amazing gift, these, in terms of sponsorship to get a globe in any of these sites was something like a twenty, thirty thousand dollar donation that had to be made on, on the path of one single globe, and so there's a few of them here now, the one that we are suggesting, this very colorful globe talks about wind patterns. Now, the windmills and all the things that are sticking out of that will be removed, the artist who does live in Chicago will come and they will have it at no expense to us, have all that removed and refinished so that it will be fine against the elements for quite a while, but it'll be.
Will this be outside?
This will be outside, yes.
Forever or just visit?
Forever.
Forever, I thought it was a travel district.
They were giving us one of these globes.
Okay, it's coming to Boston, I thought it was gonna leave.
Not only is it coming to Boston, this is a gift to chicering school for all that we have done so far, I mean, the blog alone has really raised a lot of consciousness with children, and whereabouts, if you haven't been in the cap lately, we have a replica of a NASA globe that's about as big as what this globe will be, and the kids, Cheryl and I just made our appointment for Wednesday, to, to look at what can our community now do to just raise consciousness with our kids. So when it hits in the middle of August, we won't be in school, but we don't want to miss this opportunity, and I believe we've been invited to all of the big events downtown as a globe supporter. So we could have had this on the commons and could have had our globe there, but it's just too much for, for the teachers and kids to do with just a few weeks left in school, so we opted just to have it brought here and then it will be housed here, no expense to us, and there will be a plaque that will sit in front saying, this is the globe, this was originally designed for this, and our, we've asked some chicering reporters and our bloggers to write that plaque. The plaque is being donated to us, so the only thing we have to do is prep the ground and everything else will be, will be good at us, it's, it's an amazing opportunity.
That Terry and prepping the ground, because this is a huge, heavy globe.
It is.
We have a building.
And we've got a water well, so.
We do, and so parking wreck is better, it'd help us than whoever else, Kelly, girl Kelly and all that, we do need to have some people.
Where are we thinking of?
Yeah, where would you suggest?
So what I, my suggestion, without knowing any sprinkler systems, we had two ideas, so one was, sorry for the camera, one was to put it over here by the shed, between the rock and the shed, and find, there's some leveled ground right there, it won't get hit by the plow, which is important.
So it sits on the ground?
It sits right on the ground, yeah.
On a cement base.
The other place that I thought.
So sort of like, it would have a base like this?
Correct, that's why I gave you that.
Would that base be above ground, or would that, does the base get kind of buried in the ground?
Parts of it, part of it gets buried under the ground, yes, because it's, I forget how deep that is.
How do we keep the darling children from climbing on it?
Well, it's, it's really hard to block.
It's a circle.
It's a circle.
It's like a big ball.
Well, this one looks like it's kind of three D.
That's lean.
It's not that big, not enough to get a handle.
Okay, so they can't do something.
And the other place just, is to put it, like, we've lost a few bushes on the right side of the, the walkway, and that might be nice, again, out of the way of the plow, out of the, so we don't have, we don't lose it, so there are a couple places, so we.
And it will withstand the snow and the rain?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's made to do that.
Now Terry, where has this globe traveled to?
This globe, as, as far as I know, has come from Chicago, we had another globe that was from Marseille that we were thinking of accepting, but this globe was.
And this is showing wind, wind patterns.
Right, around the globe.
That's very cool.
It, yes, and, and we really have to thank our bloggers, our, our student bloggers for, for the time that they, they still continue to blog and, and raising the consciousness of, of us, you know, climate changes, of water usage, so forth. So you'll see the globe specs are down here, basically it's three hundred pounds the globe itself, but the base is eighteen hundred, so it's solid, it's not gonna shake, move, rattle.
It's not falling over.
Yep.
So it comes on the base, we don't have to build the base.
Nope, it comes with a base.
We just have to dig it and put it in the ground and secure it to the ground.
Exactly. Exactly. Yep, as it says here, the globe will be delivered to school at its place, and once it's placed, and then we'll work on the plaque and have that, so.
Wow.
So we're asking for.
The acceptance of, yeah, it's sort of scary, but.
Accepting the world.
Yeah, that's great, that's very.
I kind of live downhill from that spot. I'm the first house.
A new children's book, Carl and the World. The globe goes rolling down to Carl's house.
Could be an SAT question.
And we, and you feel comfortable about uncovering the expenses?
I feel very comfortable, we received it.
So is there an agreement that we, an agreement?
Well, there's no, the way I understand it is that these globes, through the course of two thousand and seven, have been placed on concrete, have been placed on dirt, have been placed on grass, they've been, all over the world, they know how to, what the conditions need to be to install them, so they would provide us with those instructions, you would have them.
It could be moving to the dump.
They trample home with, you know, I think we have to provide some kind of forklift here to get it off the truck.
So is there anything in writing, like an agreement, or?
Well, not yet.
Title to the world or anything like that? Title to the world?
Should we wait and approve it next in June, or do we have, do you need approval tonight?
I think you have to, the world is on the move.
Okay, well, I'm just, okay. Okay.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to accept the large globe?
Oh, so moved, truly.
Second?
To do that.
A second tier.
All in favor? Carl, was that a guess?
Sure.
Alright.
He doesn't care.
Yeah, like, it's, it's by his house, he's gonna have it, yeah. Alright, so that was.
Just maybe as you get more information in June, we can get a little more.
If you'd like, I can be in contact with Mr. West or Miss Hay, and we'll just keep working through their offices as we do that.
Okay.
No lights, right? No spotlights, clear lights, nothing like that.
No, no light pollution, that'd go against the cool globe tradition.
Stroh.
Yeah, stroh.
Exactly.
I was trying to ask for it.
Try to get more information.
Okay.
Chris, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a lengthy report, hopefully you got everything you needed.
It's always a pleasure. It really has.
Chris, thank you.
He'll come by and visit.
At budget time.
No, oil contract comes up, I'll be back.
We'll invite you. Okay, um, Dr. Nugent, I know you've just, but you're back up again.
Um, I'd like to, I feel like I'm in court, ask for the mercy of the, the school committee, I am going to be walking in one piece of data this evening, so, and I think it will provide clarity around one of our topics, so, John, just move this to you.
Thank you.
So first of all, as I begin my report, thank you, thank you, you and Heather did an amazing job this year as presidents, it was fun, I look forward to every one of our meetings, and we spend half our time talking about everything else in the world, and then we get down to business, so you made such a wonderful contribution, and we really, really appreciate it, along with all the yummy food and all the fun things that, that PTOs, you know, I always say that PTO is the spirit of our building and it is so true, so thank you, and thank you Heather, so, yes, there. Going through just some items tonight, I'm going, looking at the full day kindergarten update, if we go to the part of my report which I think is on page four, yes. So when sitting with the kindergarten team and talking about how we want to report out this in September, it really engaged us in a very interesting conversation on how do we measure success at kindergarten, and what does a kindergarten learner look like? We know when we go to MCAS years, starting in third grade, and that type of data, we can measure success through academic means, but when we look at how kindergartners and how we measure success, and you'll see some of this in our language here, it's, there's a social emotional element that's unique to an early L learner that does not exist in an upper L learner, and that is if a child. And that is if a child does not feel comfortable, they don't understand the routines of the day. They have, we went through all this, let's see. Looking at the ability to focus, the ability to listen, to stay on task, to do some independent activities, there's a lot of what we considered qualitative data. That was very important. But before you can start looking at academic, you have to focus on the social emotional. And those of you who have worked with young children will know that that's part of that first couple months of school, is working with them so that for those who have never had a structured academic day, this is, it can be quite something. So that, the team really wanted to make sure that we understood in that first paragraph about what that is all about. So then when we looked at the data and we looked at the qualitative data, you could see that in terms of pacing, that that was really important this year, that we had the time to work on things that we normally didn't have, which is when there's a pure problem in the classroom, you could sit down and have an open circle and not feel like, okay, I have three minutes to do this and then we've gotta go on to something else. It wasn't, it didn't have to be rushed like that. We also know that there were times for them to be, have a little more flexibility in their scheduling so that we could take the time to do the interventions. And I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the differentiation of instruction in a minute. The idea of that children can have, we could do the additional curriculum enrichments that we've done. We've done many Audubon works this year, which was a lot in our curriculum, our time because of the open, was it nine additional hours a week of school that provided us. And then the idea that these kiddos were never quite, and totally, this wasn't their school every day. They would come three half-days and two full-days. Now they eat like all the other big kids. They are in the lunchroom every day. They fit, they go to every school assembly. We don't have to worry about the time of day of the school assembly. They're fully integrated in our program. And it really surprised the teachers when they went back and thought, okay, how did they do in those first few weeks? The kids were fine. They really surprised us. We, that full day was nothing for them to adjust. I don't think we had one tier during those first two weeks. So it was, in that regard, it was very successful. While looking at the quantitative data, when we began to look at that, and if you could just draw your attention to the, to the two charts so far that were submitted that talked about the summaries on kindergarten ELA and math. There are a few things that you need to know. We do not, for those of you who are, who work with statistics a lot, it's really hard to make comparisons when they're not apples to apples. Nothing about these two charts are apples to apple comparisons. They're all a little bit different. For example, if we look at the ELA and we, oh, okay. So there, the information that we were looking for is on here. So for two thousand and nine, ten, two thousand and ten, eleven, and two thousand and eleven, twelve school years, under the last category of words read, there were only twenty-eight words that were considered mastery site words that they needed to have. This year, because with the additional time, they actually brought it to fifty-one words. Right, it's a lot to, for them to do. And these are identified words, working with our literacy specialists, and to then bring with them as they go into first grade. So what you see here, the bump up from the beginning of the school year, we see in the previous years, you know, mastery of that. But when you look at this data that I just presented you, this new piece of data will actually show growth. All right? So both of these charts are very similar. The first three columns, I commonly call those the Sesame Street skills. I mean, they could pick up these skills from apps on their iPad or watching TV or being with the, you know, at home with mom and dad. But when we look at the categories of rhyming, blending, beginning sound, ending sound, and by the way, CBC is consonant, vowel, consonant, that's what that represents. And then reading words, these are explicitly taught here. And this is where the real story really begins. And so when I look at those columns and I look at two thousand and nine and I look at two thousand and twelve, thirteen, we are beginning to see a little bit of growth. But one data point does not make a trend. So we need to look at this for the next few years. What really tells an interesting story, I think, is the data that we submitted tonight. So if you go, say, to the last column, which is the words read, and you look at the data that's collected in September.
So is this one, like one class?
This is one class.
So this is Johnny Sally Suzie.
Right.
And the first one is a perfect child.
It's yours, right?
Right, the first line. Is that a child, that's a person? That's actually a child?
Well, this is real data.
Oh, okay.
And they've been arranged to protect the innocence.
Okay, so Suzie up here at the top.
Yep, Suzie's number one.
Suzie's a reader. Suzie came in as a reader.
Okay.
Yep.
And is a reader.
But this helps show that.
And we stop at fifty-one because also the fifty-one identified words that we expect everyone, so that child gained unconditional words, much more than that, but we only measure fifty-one.
Oh, she'll do it, yeah.
Right.
When we look at, say, the next child, child number two, that child walked in identifying two words from the list of fifty-one and ended the year with the forty-five. So that's, that's amazing. It's like all of our learners, although the goal is a hundred percent, that's not a reasonable expectation that every child is gonna have all these words mastered.
Because it's very important to remember kindergarten one and two, and I'm preaching to the choir here, but I just think it's important to go on record that a big part of reading is developmental. There is nothing necessarily wrong.
Right.
With child, child who started out at one and is at twenty-two right now, this child maybe has a reading issue or may be reading Magic Treehouse by the end of next year and be completely on track for the rest of his or her career. So, and this data is very, very helpful, but I know you know, but I just want us to make sure we know that.
This is so cool.
That, you know, it's okay. I mean, I hope you guys know why this child's reading only twenty-two words and.
But Kristin, I think it's really important for you to have pointed that out because I don't think that, you know, perhaps the general population does necessarily understand that. And the developmental aspect cannot be underestimated. And I think unfortunately, sometimes it is. You enter kindergarten and there, there begins the expectation.
Right.
K, all the way up through twelve, there are expectations at each particular grade level. And you're one hundred percent right. Children develop at different levels. And we get into trouble if we try to force something that a child has not prepared themselves for on many different levels, not necessarily just the academic, but then also the self-esteem and everything that goes around that. So thank you so much for bringing that up.
But that being said, these are very impressive results.
They are very impressive. And they're very typical of what we get. So, but I, I think what I was asked to present tonight is a preview of what you will be seeing in September. And again, this is just one class. It doesn't represent four, but it's pretty indicative of what we see in the other groups. The bit of nervousness that comes out is that, well, should everyone be doing it? No, that's not developmentally appropriate. So I wanted just to give a preview to that, so when you do see this, that in all cases, every child may grow this year. In that particular area. So when you look at then, the, for example, at the CBC writing, we have children that some came with these words already, many of them don't. They, one hundred percent, all left with them. So we're seeing good growth. Now, is it possible full-day program increasing that? We get to.
Because unless you do this for last year.
We do.
Oh, so that's, this is really, really cool to see.
Yeah.
Was this, you already had this or is this something that was created for this exercise?
This is what I always refer to my kindergarten teachers as the data hounds.
They have these?
All of, yes.
Okay.
Yep, and they look at them and informs their practice. We go over it regularly. They choose, long before our valuation system came out with touch points along the way, they've always done three, three of these a year. And so it, so that that informs their practice and how their children are progressing.
So if we, I realize that the measurables might be different. So if we took last year's, this piece of paper from last year, it would have twenty-eight instead of fifty-one that you're measuring. But me, if you looked at that, I don't know if this would show an even stronger growth than last year. So that's, I would always hope that we're not asking for new information. It's something you already have and just presenting to see if it's telling us success, that we invested this money and we're seeing this improvement.
I'm gonna ask that we make sure that Amy records that in the minutes because I do think that it's really important that the schools share knowledge and gathering that they are doing to inform their practice and that we move away from generating materials to bring forward that really don't inform those practices or don't help us with the guidelines for the instruction.
So we will be presenting you with a sheet that looks very much like this, but it would be the collection of all four classes for this year, not just, just this, so.
Well, I think what's helpful, and as you brought up the point, the averages just don't tell the story.
They do.
Um, because, you know, you look at, so this is, this is really very helpful.
But that's terrible data.
It could just be the four copies of this and four copies, and we can do the eyeballing and say, yep, I can see. There's no more, you know, it's, it might be really, it might pop out.
Sorry, in light of the conversation we're having about kids learning at different paces, this may sound like a, weren't you just listening question? But we shouldn't view these as standards that the kids are working against? And, okay, so affirmative there. Second question would be just in terms of, why cap the data? Just in terms of sort of max, if I'm looking at words read, for example, you know, you've got a few kids at max of fifty-one. What if they can do a hundred and two? Wouldn't it be worth to understand sort of the upside opportunity as well? Or upside, not opportunity, but performance? Just again, for data capture purposes.
They do do more. We don't capture anything more than fifty-one. Those are the.
I guess what I'm asking is why?
Why? Could you cook them into, take them into the first grade and start tracking? Because there's obviously.
I would hate to have my takeaway be is, well, once we get to fifty-one, we sort of stop. We stop caring.
No, we don't, no, that's.
I'm not, that's, I look at the report though, and that's, that's a prospective path I could go down versus saying, if we end up with a cohort that's sort of exceptionally strong, wouldn't we want to capture that information to figure out how to pull them out and give them an opportunity to really accelerate? If from a developmental perspective, they're ready to do that.
Right. So hence the reason why we went and increased from twenty-eight. Now fifty-one was, again, based on the recommendation of our literacy specialists.
Right.
If we, if that standard's being met then, the, we would raise it, but it's not there yet.
Twenty-five days to go and you've got three kids in the class that are there and another seven in spitting, you know, spitting distance. I assume, you know what I mean? I mean, that's.
Sure.
But just so you know, the teaching does continue.
I'm a little aware, yeah.
But, and then if, if the standard does become too low, they'll increase it, which they have done in both ELA and math.
But I'm not suggesting, again, my, the way I think of standard is, that's, that's an expectation. I'm not trying to raise the bar in terms of a standard as much as just capture the data on performance. It may be two X standard. I'm making that up. That's the way I'm processing what I'm seeing here. But I would just like to know what the true upside potential of individuals may be, even if it's only one kid. I think it's important to, to capture the information around their specific performance capability.
Right, to sort of, so instead of maybe saying, let's say this child who, at the top, who obviously came in reading, maybe changed their data point from fifty-one words read to reading level two point three.
Right.
Which is like, no one's expecting a kindergartner to be reading a two point three, but wow.
But we could, we could sit there and say, you know, we're never gonna change the curriculum because we're not capturing data that says, oh, they're going beyond what, what, you know, the recorded capture rate. I mean, that's.
But we, with the idea of differentiation, though, we do, we do go deeper in that. And let me bring that.
And I'm just, just assess it, that's all.
Right. Thank you. One of the examples to this, which goes along with the, with the technology piece as well, is, for example, we have seen because of the extended day. I walked into a kindergarten room the other day and here were a table of six children using one of our iPads. And two of them were, they're all doing RASD Kids, which is our reading program here at school. And as I went around, I noticed that each of them were doing something a little different. And then there were these two little girls who were at a level D, which is what the end of the year reading should be at this point. And they're discussing the story about this. And then they're like, well, we can go a little bit more. So they, they were able, because they answered the questions correctly, they're able then to go to the next level, which is an E. Where I had another child at the table that was at a B, was reading and enjoying the book. So there's a lot of opportunities with this extra time that we really were being able to, we have already used it to take a child from where they are and raise them up. So we do see that. And we do capture that data. It's not being displayed here through their, their DRAs. So, yes.
This is maybe not the purview of school committee, so this may just be B as a parent. But I would also hope, it's very impressive what we're doing in kindergarten. But I would also hope as we see these strong results, that the teachers know that it also isn't necessarily time that we have to do more, you know. We just feel like we don't need to be doing race to nowhere in kindergarten.
Right.
But to stretch it out, I know one of my favorite things that I saw come home was when it was bunny day and an invitation came home written by my child to bring his bunny. His bunny was invited to come and they had bunny day. And to me, like, that is so, let's enrich our curriculum with that kind of opportunity for writing, opportunity for reading, opportunity for play. You know, that clearly, we're doing so much that's quantifiable, but that qualitative, maybe it runs magic. Hang on to that.
So we have, in, in the technology section, you'll see something mentioned about the corn project.
Yeah.
And that was a great opportunity for the kiddos to get really excited to watch a Colonel Thorne who wrote out of the window, basically, on a paper towel. But that was like magic to these, to these kiddos. And just what you were saying, but what they did was they captured it and created voice thread out of it. And so that every child could contribute to that story because it was set morally and necessarily, they wrote a part of that which you don't see. But, but what you see as a parent is a child, every child was engaged. They understood the science and they could somehow articulate it through the nine, I think there were nine frames that the teacher brought together. So we're seeing a lot. It was in the other day where they were using another, another class was using, doing their research paper on animals. So they got to pick a favorite animal and now they're creating a four-slide presentation. That includes animation. So they're, they're limited to only their imagination at this point. And they, every one of them, I know with help with Mrs. Chase and the classroom library, are able to, to tell us a little something about information on their, on their animals. So the teacher had, I think it was an earthworm, and so her animal was an earthworm, which technically is not an animal, but that's, and, but showed the kids, like, what she thought of in her project. And they talked about it. They critiqued it. They said what they liked about it, what they learned from it. And then that provided their beginning of research for this project that they'll end their school year with. So it has, in some, in many ways, it's amazed us on how easy it has been for our kids to come in and use that technology and be able to break barriers of, we know that our children's oral language is not, is more developed than their written language. And so something like a piece of technology actually helps them bridge that gap between the two. So we get a lot more out of some of our kids now than we ever have because they can express it and then come back and try to write it. So it's been, it's been very exciting. And we thank you for supporting our initiative on that and it's been great. So for the rest of my report, I think you'll see that we provided some detail regarding the update on the Common Core and how we've aligned with the, with the Common Core. And please, were we not talking about this today, Mr. West?
Of course.
Okay. So one of the pieces that, that we would like to let you all know is it has been our practice in this building to always stay ahead of the change that's happening in the Common Core. We've been anticipating this change for quite a while, like what's happening in science right now and saying, what can we do now to get ready for these? We know that the inquiry-based thinking is really gonna be the one element that's gonna permeate all the standards in science, K to twelve. So we make sure that we have that thinking already in our writing and the way we look at projects so that, again, it's not a big adjustment from when we look at the core. When you go to, say, other school districts that have waited until it's been delivered before reacting, it is a bigger adjustment. We haven't been like that. We've been keeping ahead of it. And when we hear a little bit more, we begin more tweaking. And so that when it finally is here. And so that when it finally is here, the jump is, is not, not huge. And I hope we reflected that in, in my report. So we have that. Let's see, what else? Kindergarten enrollment, we've already, they are the last piece.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So we're at sixty-three?
Correct.
So just, what does this mean for, when I did the math, that's fifteen points?
We still need, sixty-six is sort of the real solid number we need for, for classes.
So when, I remember a couple of years ago, you waited till July to send out kindergarten replacements, I think. Will you do that? When do you decide? You can't just suddenly decide in August. Oh, we're going from three to four. I mean, you can't, but-
This is policy, we're, we're, I would deflect to Mrs. Rose.
My sense, Christine, is if I felt as though we were not going to make the sixty-six, we would certainly be making movements at this point. I don't think in the entire time that I have been here that we have not had at least an enrollment increase of three students over the summer. So I feel very confident that Chikering will have their sixty-six. If, in fact, we were closing the school year out and we were still in the fifties as we were earlier this year, then I would have very serious conversations with both Dr. Nugent and also with Mr. Bliss regarding having to eliminate that. But I, I, I would be very, very surprised-
Okay.
-if that were the case. The other thing that I need to share with you is that our special ed director is also watching very carefully the makeup of those classrooms and the students that are coming in that may have some additional needs. One of the things that I've said to our special ed directors is, yes, we want to increase the number of students that we have within our school as long as we can meet their needs, but I also, not at the cost of everybody else in the classroom. And not at this school, but I have a very serious problem I'm dealing with in another school where I'm, have been working with the special ed director and also with the administration to say, if we can't get the child settled down, then we need to give further thought as to what's the environment that's best going to meet their needs. So I, Marla, while you're here, I do thank you for staying in frequent contact with me on, you know, the children that make up that kindergarten landscape.
Okay.
So with that said, we will keep administration apprised of where we are. You hear it anyway, because we start shouting in the hall, so we have another one. So it's-
Those are the phone calls we love getting at Central Office.
You're making those calls to the realtors. We're looking for kindergarteners.
Yes, please. Yes. I, I think tax incentives, whatever the town can do, if you have a kindergarten, we'll take off, you know, five hundred algae taxes. I don't know. So anyway, we're, we're, we're very, very close. So-
So Dr. Nugent, you do know that this is being televised, so I mean, to our selectmen.
Yes. Anyway, the last item on my agenda is, and, and apologizing on my part for not bringing the Nature's Classroom earlier to the board for approval. Mr. Bliss and I have already talked about how we're going to rectify that in the future. So this will be an agenda item that we will bring forth in September of next year so that we're not asking less than five days from the trip to, if we may go.
Well, at least we are asking before they leave.
Yes, yes, we are asking about that. But-
I'm just curious, why do we have to approve that every year?
Because it's an overnight threat.
Overnight. Policy, page seventy in your policy manual.
Yes.
I guess I'm a little behind on the policy.
So we do have, we, we, I, on behalf of the school, we are asking if it would be acceptable for us to go to Nature's Classroom. We are staying within state. We're not leaving like we had done a couple of years ago. So it's the same places that we went to last year. And it's all people in my training. So-
We don't have to come, do we?
Wow.
Deb goes for us.
Yes, she spends a week being during in a museum.
I've done it. I've been there.
And I believe Mr., is Mr. Wyden is going to do his blog again this year, or someone's going to blog, so that, we found that to be very helpful for parents who were going to. And we, we do have, for those who don't know, we, we do a Chikering camp for those kiddos who don't get to go. And our goal is to make that such a magical week that they don't feel like they've missed out anything. And they do, they do a lot of cool things. The new piece this year is the Liquid Magnet unit that they're doing. We're looking at a trip to the Museum of Science, we have the Owl pellets. It's, it's fun-filled and it's, it's equally as educational. We mirror the curriculum that they're getting at Nature's Classroom. And so we're very-
And what percentage aren't going?
This year, of the hundred and five, seven are not going.
Just seven, okay.
Which is the lowest so far that we've had. Usually they, they prepare you for ten percent of your population doesn't go. And I have to say, that's exactly true for the last two years. This year, it's a little less than that.
We cover the cost, right?
No.
No, the families cover the cost.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I make a motion to approve.
Oh, second. Nature's Classroom, and what, where is it again, Massachusetts?
Charlton.
Charlton, Massachusetts, okay.
Mr. Bliss is back there.
This is my back here.
And it's June, I mean, it's May, what's the dates?
It's, we're going to be going next Tuesday, so it's May twenty-eighth through, May thirty-first.
Okay, May twenty-eighth through May thirty-first.
Correct. We always, we always hope for the Tuesday after the Friday.
Rose, until Friday.
And then we go until Friday.
Okay, so we'll put that in, okay, motion. Okay, second?
I think I seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm off the clock.
I think closed up, but, but no one's been sworn in yet, so you're not off.
Community comments, that's all I can do.
You're not, no, no, you're not off the clock because you have, no, there's been no swearing in.
Right. And results are not posted.
Yes.
Can I ask a few questions that were from the report?
Yes, please.
Of Dr. Nugent?
Yes.
It looked, so I'm, I'm going back to the common, your, the outline on the Common Core.
Yes.
Section three.
Yes.
With the math, I saw the reference that the report card standards have been changed to reflect the change in con, in standards, basically, from the Common Core. And it, I, I just, in the verbiage, I, I wasn't sure if, if that same, if the standards have been reflected also for the ELA, to the extent that the ELA standards had, had been changed over the years since the standard-based report card was in place several years ago. Has that also been updated to reflect the changes?
Yes, what you'll see is the change of standards have changed. So now we have four common standards under ELA that K five now are all aligned to. And what they are, what happens underneath is every year is tweaked.
Okay.
So, but we have aligned to them, yes.
Okay. I had a question in, in terms of the process of the curriculum review. It, it, it talks about how they, they go back to the teams and the curricular units, team leaders are going back to the teams.
Yes.
There was a comment here that, let's see.
Is it on the everyday math part?
Nope, I'm back in ELA. Because everyday math, I was, is a little, it's easier to follow for me, and it's probably reflective of the fact that with the everyday math, it's very-
Pretty constant for you.
It's, you know, it's outlined and it's aligned very easily to the Common Core, whereas the ELA is a little bit more homegrown, where we're taking pieces from different materials. So it's more narrative. And so I'm focused on the last comment here, talking about the team began to modify the report, report cards to align with the standards and the assessments to match. And then the teachers wrote lessons on the new modes of writing, et cetera, et cetera. My question is, is this done in a team setting or are the teachers individually doing this work?
So it's done in, in two directions. It's done vertically, which is K to five, representatives from each of those grade-level teams sends one person, and they, that's what makes up the curriculum committee. So that's usually where the work begins, the discussion that is started, whatever is the, that first steps in that direction. Then, once that work is, is started, then it goes back to our horizontal look, which is at the grade level. So then everyone at the grade level will then discuss what had happened at the vertical meeting. So it's always going vertically and horizontally every time we make a change, so that it's not just one voice, say, in the first grade, but it will be an initial K five voice, and then every first grade teacher will then look at it at, at the next CBT, we call it, which is the, our common planning time meetings. So they go through that. And then that information then goes back through that one representative, back to the vertical team. And that's, next action step has happened, then that's reported back to the team. So it's always going vertically and horizontally.
Terry, can I jump into this?
Absolutely.
In that paragraph, the second sentence, page three, Mrs. Harper led multiple curriculums at each session to each grade level, that's when the grade-level teams spent and did a lot of their curriculum, right?
This year, yes. And that was really, because when you look at the math standards, this is why I love math, going on record, because it's very clear. The scope and sequence is, is very clear. When, when we look at how the state provided us with the benchmarks and standards for ELA, it's, it's very general and open for a little more interpretation. So what we did was look at, our focus issue was a lot on writing, because they went from personal narratives to really focusing on all four of the different types of writing genres. So we needed to adjust our, our curriculum. Fourth grade led the way for that, and they spent, they were the first one, grade-level team that worked with Sheila to say, how do we begin to, we know how to do this genre pretty well, but what about the, the, we need a pre-post test? What is, what would that look like? Sample writings? Do we all, what does that look like in terms of grading rubrics? There was a lot of work that needed to be done. And so although they had just a few days with Sheila, then they worked continuously on that. We took what we learned from them and then applied it to the other grade levels so that they did have an opportunity to, to work. And so I think fifth grade was the last team to work with Sheila, and that was just last week, so.
And then if I can just-
Sure.
-reflect on a comment in the midway through that first paragraph on page three, again, still on ELA. It says, "The ELA team recognizes the need within Chikering for a consistent K through five writing program that addresses yadda-yadda," which is what you're talking about.
Right.
Which sounds to me like a great SMART goal for next year.
We've already talked about it, yeah.
I, you know, highlight that.
Today.
Today. Yeah, we talked about the school improvement and actually supporting this initiative, yes.
Okay, and in my travels, since I was privy to a meeting with Sherburne when I was the concierge for the Assistant Superintendent, that came up in those conversations with those teachers, they have the exact same initiative. So to the extent there's some learning and sharing that can happen between the two buildings, there could be some opportunity there.
Yes. And we, we had that opportunity this year with math.
Right.
And that was wonderful. And the teachers loved it. They loved the opportunity to sit and talk about their practices. We don't perfectly align.
Right.
But, but that's okay, because the conversation was still really rich. And what they found out is they could share resources. And I know that one of the, almost every team that I, I work with, I work with three teams in the building, each of them have asked for more time to, to work with their counterparts at Pine Hill. So we will be doing that. And we have one more opportunity at the beginning of June to work with grade paying, and, and now hopefully we can put the teams together rather than having the Chikering crew and the Pine Hill crew, it's like first grade team and second grade team, and we start blending some of those lines. So we do look, and that Barbara Brown and I have, we do look for opportunities for our staff to get together.
Great. And if I just had one more observation from that same paragraph.
Yeah.
When you're talking about, you know, looking at a consistent K, the, the writing program, and that you've got a number of writing curriculums that you're using, and you list them here. I'm just reflecting on the old math curriculum before we had, everyday math was also a-
Build your own.
Build your own hodgepodge of lots of different things, because there wasn't one thing that they, well, it just built, it was built that way, but they were able to find one thing in everyday math that I think everyone thinks is a, is a big success, and it aligns perfectly with standards. I guess my question is, is there, is there any thought to, to seeing if there's a program similar to everyday math that would solve the writing, or is it known that there isn't, and therefore this is what we're left with?
Well, what we have is, we have a balanced literacy program, which basically has very distinct parts. So word usage, writer's workshop, reader's workshop. We also have, I'm trying to think, the phonics program, so forth. There isn't one program that does all of that well. So what we have done is look at where the, the program provides us with the kind of research, student achievement piece that is good for our community. So, for example, there are lots of phonics foundations out there, but Fundations, which is our phonics program, is the best for our community. You'll see bits and pieces of that in what we consider as basal readers, which is a complete program that would take grammar and reading and writing and put it together. But they, we find that they're very surface type of pieces. They don't get into rich literature, they don't challenge and expand children's vocabulary. So it's, there's not one program that does it all. And so this is what makes it challenging. It's not that these are disjointed, it's by nature, these skills that we're building in, in language are somewhat discrete, but then the teachers bring what they've learned in words that way and look for it in the literature or in their writing, or then we could cross curriculum that with doing it in science as well as social studies. So you start seeing that blend. What we liked about the empowering writers is that it, that was the first program that we see in terms of writing, actually begins to bring in different disciplines. So not only does it help us build a more consistent model from K to five, but it also gives us opportunities to see that, that a science unit that aligns with our sinus science who actually comes in for social studies and so forth. So that's probably the best one we have found so far that brings some of the other different components of a balanced literacy together. But there isn't anything out there right now that's perfectly-
There isn't one thing, that's what I thought the answer was.
I wonder with, excuse me for doing this to you, Christine. With Christine sitting there and knowing that writing, I've, I've been in your classroom when, when things are popping over there for your students, how do you feel about the, the materials that are provided for you and having multiple resources to pull from?
Well, I definitely think in, in terms of fourth grade, it has done a lot of work with the writing, and it, it is very homegrown. And I think that gives you a lot of flexibility, but I think it also leaves a lot of wiggle worm, where though you try your best to align both vertically and horizontally, it's, that doesn't necessarily as happen as, as tightly as you would like to. So we've looked at, I know that they've looked at, I'm not on the ELA committee, I'm on math, because I too love math, but, but I know they have looked at, and I, and Stephanie Wassick is the one who, for the fourth grade team is on it, and she is, she brought it back and showed us. And it was kind of like tears of joy, because it, it, it had that alignment, not only K to five, but it had that alignment across, that trajectory across the year, where not only did it make sense, but it, it kept tying everything back together, because we were so narrative-focused for so long. And that worked fine for what we had and for what the state required. But once they made that switch, we very much this year were like, we knew we needed to do something, and it was like rapidly filling in those holes, or making that switch, not holes, but making those changes.
So it sounds like you've really done significant work to be able to address both math and your writing.
Yeah, yes. And we've done a lot of that, but I think in looking at that, it was nice to see that though it doesn't fill everything, it does take that one piece of the writing where you're looking at narrative, and you're looking at persuasive, and you're looking at expository, and tying that across curriculum and having it done in a way that it's K to five.
Yeah.
Right? And so we've tried to do bits and pieces of that, you know, at night, at eleven o'clock, trying to figure that out and calling each other and doing all that. But to have it done, it's a place to start from. Would we make changes? You know, I would think the first year we'd follow it pretty closely like we did with everyday math, just so that everybody's on board and following those same routines. And then my hope would be then you're gonna, you're gonna go back and you're gonna adjust. It's all the student needs for that particular year, based on your teaching methods, based on changes that the state then brings in, and kind of go from there. But I do feel like it'd be nice to have that starting place. And I feel like for everyday math, we had that.
Yep.
And so we've already started those differentiation pieces and pulling from here and pulling from there. When we first had it, everybody started with that, and it was a foundation. And I think it'd be nice to have, I think we have the foundation, I just think that it's more homegrown, and it's a different field than if you had something that was already out there and research-based.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
And so when you look at the other programs though, with the six plus one trades, Words Their Way, Fundations, these are not homegrown projects at all. So we're fine tuning that.
They're all at different grade levels too, right? It may seem like a lot, but you're not doing them in every, you graduate up into some of those.
Right, exactly.
Gotcha. Good point.
There's been a lot of work with the ELA committee this year getting alignment and agreement. So throughout the school K to five, there's grade level commitment to empower programs. Every classroom will teach. These empower standards and formats throughout the school and then review them the next year. The six plus one is an assessment tool for writing.
We saw that one at grade level last year.
Yeah, we saw a lot of that.
Uh, Fundations and Words Their Way are word study programs. Fundations is K to three and Words Their Ways.
The next level, yeah.
Three to four. And then we transitioned to the middle school with the fifth grade program, which then goes into the vocab building program. Which really is kind of a nice way to exit the building and getting them in ready for the middle school in terms of word usage and looking at competition unitizations and actually SAT skills that are there.
Well Terry, to those of you that are present, and Christine, I'm glad that you're here tonight. And Marla, for the special needs kids, I have to say I'm really pleased with the work that's been done to move Chicaring forward. And to be looking at what do we have where good school? And what is it that our students need more of? And I know that it's not always been an easy journey. And I know that it has been trying upon occasion. And especially when I heard from some of the teachers saying five years ago, we had too many different things. And trying to go ahead and not buy into one particular recipe. But to continue to support the expertise of the teachers and also bring it together so that we're looking at fine tuning. As your superintendent, I'm very pleased with the work that you've done. And I thank you. Because Christine, I know that you all have been on the phone at eleven o'clock at night. Some of you have been very articulate in talking to me about that. And it's always focused on the children in the curriculum though. So congratulations.
Thank you. I think one of the pieces that we do acknowledge, and Christine mentioned this already, is consistency. We are looking for consistent high quality-
So that there's equity in the classrooms.
Correct. Which is when we look at the empower strategies, that it's not really a program, but it's a strategy so that we make sure we look at this in a scope and sequence piece. So there's been a lot of conversations that we've had, that vertical and horizontal discussion. And we're getting there.
Thank you. This was really, really rich discussion. So thank you for bringing this to the table. It's really helpful to hear.
Good work.
And that's my report.
Thank you. Yes, any other questions on Terry's report?
Yes.
Okay.
The comment.
And then you're out.
The benches outside and the snow plowing damages.
Yes.
Are we supposed to just look the other way? Those benches were donated by the PTO several years ago. And they cost several hundred dollars each. And there's a real void on that patio that there's not a place to sit and gather. So what do we do?
Well, I would like to propose that over the summer, we have some conversations of who's going to be responsible for replacing those benches. And whatever benches we do buy will be removable in the winter to another location. So I've already talked to Mr. O'Narano about finding a place to store them in the winter. Because I do not know how we can do so much damage to a solid wrought iron bench. But both of them were mangled, I mean, quite severely. And two years ago, we had a column taken out by one of our plows. Besides the fact that we've replaced mailboxes for two out of the three years I've been here. So it's, when you have a winter, like you did this winter or two years ago, it's, I don't think they see these things there and they get piled up. And then they're always pushing the snow even further back.
Right.
And so eventually what happens is they get lost in the mound. And then when it thaws out and you're like, holy moly, where did this? The column, I'm not sure how that ever happened. But I can understand why the benches are there. So whatever we get has to be movable so that we can put them someplace else. We do know that Plinko survived the winter and it was okay. But they didn't plow, they kind of plowed around it. So it was never totally dry there. So it became a little bit of a hazard, parts of the winter. But the kids avoided it and so.
It's worried about the safety issue though of benches that are removable. Because those were bolted down to the grounds.
They weren't bolted.
Yeah, they weren't bolted into the concrete.
In the concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the leg bolts coming up out of the concrete.
Okay, then they were sheer.
Yeah, I'm saying it's hard to have removable because they were, those were stationed.
A little more, I don't know how these plows are surviving. Because that was a solid, solid rod. I mean, it's heavy, they couldn't lift it. We had to get a forklift to come and lift them off and bring them off site. And we still have them, we haven't disposed of them yet. But I don't think they were terrible. So, because they're actually twisted. So I would suggest that we make that per conversation for the summer.
Yeah, but you know what? But it may be a combination too.
Or you need parking wreck, I think it's highway department.
Parking wreck has a rather nice revolving fund, but I'm sure they said.
There you go. So, but I did want to include that in the report because of that. And I think, well, yeah, two of the three items were from snow damage. Anything else I can?
Nope. So we'll see the school improvement plan in June.
We will, and the handbook.
In the handbook.
Yes. You have the update on the curriculum from all four curriculum team leaders. I'd like to thank them all.
Yes.
They worked very hard this year and appreciate their report. But I, it's good to know that as parents read our reports that if you look at last year, this year we are refining our practice and making, I suppose that's better than your. Thank you.
Great, thank you Terry. Okay, special items, Dover town meeting update. Were most of you guys there? So we, our budget did get a hold, but it sort of was a question more of just not understanding. If you look at our numbers in the blue book, we have a huge jump in our budget year because the other numbers are net the circuit breaker. So I think the gentleman who asked the question thought that we had accelerated the debt service, which is not even in the number.
Right.
But it is sort of misleading. So I actually have already sent warrant, an email, and I wanted to bring up tonight, that I really think we should push for having the Dover School operating budget shown in two subtotal items. One for Chicaring and one for out of district. And then footnoted starred that the numbers, the actual numbers expended are net the circuit breaker.
And that we don't plan.
Because we're not showing apples to apples in this book. And so it's confusing, I think.
Well, I think also what is very misleading is when you just look at the flat Chicaring Dover budget and then you look at the region budget. And it looks as though the elementary is on the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was very misleading.
And that it goes to twenty-two?
Yes. Right. So I think that we should work towards that. We might have to do some restating of the previous numbers. But given that our out of district has grown substantially, it just makes the Chicaring elementary budget, they think that we're just spending money like those.
Well, it's inaccurate, it's really not reflecting what Chicaring is doing.
Exactly. So we'll, we'll work on that. But that was the only question and all of our capital items went through without any questions.
Is there any particular reason why you can't have footnotes in the blue book? I agree with the breakouts, but just further explanation though of some items.
Oh, well, I do think we should have put a star next to it.
Right.
Yeah. So I think that's something we need to work on. Because even in the pie chart, James, like the, it said Chicaring Elementary, even though it really was out of district and Chicaring Elementary. People just cringe when they see the nine million dollars.
Well, I think, you know, for the community.
Right.
The comments that were made to me were almost apologetic after the town meeting. It was like, no, I completely understand where the question came from. Because it was misleading and, you know, yes, you should be asking. We want you to understand, you know, where Chicaring is. And then we also want you to understand the out of district. So that, I hope that Warrant will be able to work with us on that. You know, I know that that's your ballpark, but I think it really would help the night that people are trying to go ahead and look at the book sometimes for the first time.
Right. Okay, so that was, that was good. Mr. Bliss?
Sure.
Do you have your goals ready for us?
Yeah.
Well, I did look at, oh my god, were we supposed to have written those?
I want to thank everyone. On April twenty-ninth, and we had sent this out on a separate cover, just a compilation of all the sticky notes from the evaluated training. And with the other school committees, the topic has been brought up from members that by no means were these really intended to be extracted as discernible goals. I mean, it's just, it's an, I see it as an ingredient in part of the goal development, coupled with the individual meetings that I've had with school committee members, coupled with strategic plan actions that have occurred over the past few years, and a number of other items, including school improvement plans, et cetera. So I will be over the next literally few days putting together the district goals, student performance goals, and the professional practice goals as sort of in the framework that had been provided through the Wellesley model that we have put together in something that has actions and then measurable outcomes for each of those goals. So I didn't know if there was anything else that committee members, and I think it was at the, in Sherburne, that members sort of tossed out some other ideas that they wanted to make sure were, or at least contributed to further discussion beyond what may have been captured in the sticky notes. I didn't know if there was anything that any member wanted to offer.
I think just from, from my personal standpoint, from the committee also, just maybe a goal on SPED, you know, really, and I know you've got some initiatives, but really diving in and showing that we're being aggressive with that and trying to manage it as best we can.
Absolutely.
There's measurables there, obviously, that will come out of it. So that was, that was my one input for a district goal. Because that affects really everyone. Even though it sits on the two local budgets, it still frees up money for other regions.
And the framework, I'm trying, I have a sort of a schema running that I'm working on each day that sort of tries to tie everything back to a strategic plan goal, but in a very discernible action and something that's measurable for each of us.
Good. We'll look forward to that.
That's it.
Yep. The meeting schedule, so you've got a draft in your packet. And let me just give a little, couple of notes of explanation. Call it, feel free to give your schedule.
Can I make one little, speaking of meeting schedule?
Yes.
We seem to be having trouble with this this year. The TV screen says that there's a meeting, that we have a joint meeting on May twenty-eighth.
It does?
Yes.
Out there, you mean?
Out there, yes.
May twenty-eighth? May twenty-eighth?
It's the old one.
Okay, so no, we don't have, yeah. Yeah, okay. It doesn't show up on the website. Because I've been checking the website.
We've had, just, a point for the future.
Well, that's what happens when we have a proposed calendar that floats around.
Having the calendar stay straight. So that is no knock on you, Miss Chee, that is that there have been multiple versions.
Yes, and I hate for anyone to, not that anyone ever comes to our meetings anyway.
What, we have a meeting when?
Is there, well, to that end, is there a real official calendar someplace for all district and district events?
Yeah, there are a real account for everything.
Yeah, because it would be incredibly helpful to have that in one place. And honestly, to also make a calendar feed available off of it. So anybody who wants to can subscribe to the feed and have it on whatever their portable device or desktop computer happens to be, but.
Well, if you change, probably less.
There have been a number of attempts to have one community calendar that is posted. Cheryl Ingersoll was kind of the clearinghouse that worked for a while. What we had found, which is unfortunate, is that not everybody was recording what they should have been recording.
Right.
And then there were multiple generations that were unique to specific areas. So we, and Stephen may want to address that in the future and under his watch, but I will say that we have addressed that repeatedly. And Cheryl has tried.
Oh, I'm not, it's not a, to me it's not a Chicaring.
No, this is not, this was not, no, this was not Cheryl, Cheryl Chase. This was Cheryl Ingersoll at the district level. So. Did you want to add to that?
Sure, just that, to Valerie's point, we have, running in the background of the website right now is a Google Calendar that will be all color coded depending on the district. There'll be one master calendar for the entire school system.
Can we subscribe to individual feeds whenever we want? That's really cool.
Yeah. That's one of the beauties of Google Apps.
Yeah, it's being built right now. We're just trying to figure out the players and get everything on. That's why everything's a little bit, normally by May or June would have every event with its corresponding physical plant location. Because running then further in the background, we need a physical plant calendar for internal consumption. So there's a lot of building that's going on right now on that.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so on our calendar, initially what we've, what I did in the proposed one was stick with what we did this past year, where if we had a meeting for the joint, we did not have a meeting for our own committee. Knowing that anytime there's a joint meeting, if there was an emergency issue that came up, we could always meet a half hour before and such. So again, just trying to be efficient with every administration's meeting time. In November, to get away from Thanksgiving, last year we moved it up to the first week in November. I did the same this year. And that really helps not having the meeting in October. That sort of spaces that out nicely. And then we don't have to worry about trying to have a meeting on Tuesday night before Wednesday Thanksgiving. So I think that worked out really well. The December seventeenth meeting, I'd like to suggest we actually move that to a morning meeting. That's usually a budget meeting. And I think everyone's just fresher and the staff is fresher too if we meet in a morning. So I'd like to sort of pick a morning, it doesn't have to be December seventeenth, to do that initial budget run through. Then January stays the same. March, it makes sense to move our March meeting prior to the open hearing meeting because that's when we have to have our budget approved. So I just moved that to the Monday. If we meet on our regular schedule, it's the night after. So it makes sense to go ahead and move that one to March tenth.
Is it still a Tuesday or is it a Monday?
No, it's a Monday because the other committees have the Tuesdays.
Oh, of course, sorry.
So that's why I'm saying some, a lot of ours are Mondays and then Tuesdays on some of the months. May twentieth is the Tuesday. I think we should consider moving it to either the night of the elections or prior to the elections. Because this is when we sort of wrap up a lot of business. And it's really awkward to have, you know, a whole new two people potentially. So I'd like to move that one. I don't think there's anything politically incorrect from meeting on election day, is there? We had to this year because of art night.
I know at the region, they have requested that they not meet on election night just to allow people to get to the polls. But that certainly has, it's not something that we've always, you know, adhered to. But I will, I will say Dawn, that on the November and the March meetings, having two school committee meetings back to back is very difficult in the preparation for those two school committee meetings.
Yeah, but the November one, remember, is, we don't have an October one. So we should have plenty of time to be.
No, I'm not, I'm talking about, that you got.
No, I know. But I'm saying you have to back to back. But as far as preparation, you've had six weeks to pull together.
That's true.
It doesn't usually work like that.
Well, if we plan ahead, like we had this agenda done a while ago.
Wow, it's been through September, I'm sure.
Yeah. It's good to bet sometimes how much time. Well, that's up to, to, you know.
This is usually that MCAS meeting, that's the only, this, when we look at MCAS results and really, you know, churn through.
Well, that's when we met, and we did meet there last, that's when we met last year.
But I'm just, so if there's a lot of prep for that and he's got another meeting the next day, I'm just, that's a lot of work.
Well, we can pick, but that's, we can play around with that date. But I don't, I think it makes sense not to meet the week of Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Which is the third week.
Yes.
So take your pick of when.
The tricky thing is the next week has Veterans Day on Monday.
Right.
But maybe that's not bad.
We can even go.
Oh, no, because then someone's meeting on the twelfth.
That impacts right up to show.
Right. We can even go into the last week of October. I think there must be five weeks in October and pick a day in that last week of October.
That would make more sense.
Like we have MCAS by then?
Yeah.
So we could, well, we don't, we could do the twenty-ninth.
Don't forget the twenty seconds of joint meeting though.
Right. It would be a week later.
Oh, sorry, a week later, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that one could potentially be October twenty-ninth. And then June seventeenth stays the same. Then again, if there's, if there's any issues, we can always, you know, within forty-eight hours, add a meeting. But realize in April, we have two evaluation meetings scheduled, which we could easily add on business if we needed to before.
What about the mid-year goal assessments? Is that going to be something we can cover on January twenty-first? Or is that something that would be easier done in February?
And it, do you mean at the, at the joint meeting, for instance, or at the February?
I don't know, is that a joint meeting or is that an individual school committee meeting?
And who does that?
Yeah, that would probably be a joint.
It would be a joint meeting, but it would be in February.
And that probably would be the February one, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Although that's really tight because in April.
So are the goals, are the goals at a joint level or are we having goals that each, that are specific to each?
Yeah, the goals are really a district level.
Yeah.
District.
Okay.
I thought we were sort of working them through the evaluation committee.
Right, but they'll still be at the district, um, level.
Okay.
And tied down to the individual schools, but, cause you have to remember, this isn't, this isn't, and this is where, Steve, I think you have to clarify. The goals, this is Steve's goals, they're not all that we're gonna be working on. You still have your school improvement plans, we still have the strategic plan, so things are going on. These are just the ones that we're putting in this evaluation forum to measure against.
Okay.
So I think that clarif-, cause I think people think that's all we're gonna be doing is.
Well, no, certainly, and we are trying, for the, the conversation this morning with the chikering admin team spoke to the school improvement plan and I was looking at that through the lens of making sure that in the broader contract of these goals, there would be some logical connection there to each school's school improvement plan.
Okay.
As well as to the sort of higher level goals for the school system. I mean, for instance, one of the district-wide goals, clearly the system-wide, will be the transitioning of a whole new administrative team. I mean, that's just unto itself is a massive, you know, that doesn't really speak to necessarily instructional goal related to chikering.
Yeah.
But those will be captured.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I, if I summarize this correctly, then November fourth would actually be October twenty ninth.
Yep.
Um, December seventeenth, um, we'll move back to a morning meeting. We'll just leave that date as is. Um, and then Steve, you can look at the March tenth date, but we need to be in that week and it needs to be early in that week because that's when we still have to put together a PowerPoint presentation for the open hearing, so I don't wanna do it later in the week.
Okay, I'd like to look at that.
Yeah.
We should probably footnote Dawn, the December seventeenth, something to note that that's a morning meeting.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
We can put, right, we can put AM.
And will all school committee members be able to make a morning meeting on December seventeenth?
I think, um, most of, yeah, when Adrian comes onto the table, we can ask him, but I know I, I think that was a preferred time to meet on budget was the morning. And it may be when we redo this, it'd be helpful to put, actually, the dates, like put region first, cause they're the first week. Sherburne second and us third, cause it, if we're looking at this, it's a little wacky.
It is.
That way you're flowing sometimes.
I also, is there a reason we don't have joint there also?
Yeah, if you guys make a fourth column.
Here.
Yeah, becau-, especially since we're doing more K through twelve discussion in the joint meetings.
It would help to see the entire form.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so put joint up here as its own column.
As important as the other three.
Yeah. Instead of having it at the bottom. And so, right, so the joint will have the, um.
Maybe it could be combined with union with an asterisk as to if it is just.
Right, we only separate unions because those are times we actually do union business, yeah.
The voting, right. But that, you know, I would just put a joint column.
Yeah.
Right, cause the union ones are still joint, right?
Yeah, they're still joint, signifying when you're, right.
Right, see that's a little.
Okay, well, we can make sure we get those dates and move that, we'll just have a fourth column and reorder them so they follow first, second, third, fourth, week of the month.
So you're actually looking at five meetings where you all come together?
Um.
For joint or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Really, well, no, one, two, three, four, yeah, but two are evaluation.
Right, but it's still a joint.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Still you're all coming together.
Right, and as we did this year, my guess is on one of those, probably the April seventh meetings, we'll actually have some business, um, like we did this.
I see. I think you're gonna need one of those, like February twenty fifth as an evaluation, or somewhere in the midpoint, cause you're supposed to have a mid-year review of goals. So you're gonna have to have one of these other ones as a, as a.
February, February would be the most logical, that's pretty compressed, but.
Well, because then you're, April seventh, you're starting to do the evaluation process. That's the only, it's gonna be very long to rectify any issues.
Oh, sorry, could you just change that?
Yeah, I know.
Well, you know what, I, I will say, depending on what the goals are, I mean, Oct-, you know, October, it's, cause they really start July.
October.
No, I know.
But how much action?
Right, but you don't know, it depends on what the, I don't know what the goals are, but.
Yeah.
Well, except if it's building your administrative team.
Right, that will be progress from that, but it'd really, um, we're really starting, talking about the end of August.
Isn't your team all coming in? Yeah.
Right. Well, I think when, um, we will bring together the, um, superintendent evaluation subcommittee when you're ready, prior to the June joint meeting. So we can, we can see how the calendar needs to be tweaked for the new process.
Yeah. We'll take that off.
Right, yeah.
Do you have your planning meetings for negotiations?
That, um, Steve, where that calendar?
No, I, just.
No, not yet, right?
You were going to, did you wanna bring that up?
Uh, well, that's.
That's next on the agenda.
That's not next, then, one more thing.
Nope, got D first.
Coming up.
So D was, um, sort of one of those really lofty discussion items.
Which a quarter of, man, I just always have an eye on it like this.
Right, so I, I don't think we meant to go deep into this, but get it out on the table and this is the process for setting objectives of establishing evaluation measurements for new initiatives. And that's because we do have a couple of things. We have a, um, iPad initiative, we have a world language coming on board. So we just wanted to make sure that we're not talking about this in December, but saying that there are, we do wanna make sure we're capturing information, but setting criteria for how we wanna measure these programs. Um, and I meant to, uh, Terry today pull up, if you remember, um, Terry Cockavelli had said, there was a PhD student who was working on their thesis around some of this. I didn't know if that was an opportunity worth looking into, so we had, you know, someone from the outside giving, sort of doing a little bit of that for us. I don't, I don't know, I, that's kept in the back of my mind that that might be.
And I have that email.
A great opportunity to see, um, if she wants to come and help focus that for us. So I'll see if we can find that and forward that to Steve, but I thought that was worth maybe exploring. Taking some of the load off of us and having someone from the outside who that's all they're doing, is looking at that, yeah. So we'll continue and we'll put that on.
So Dawn, are you suggesting that the, um, objectives and the evaluation measures are done by the people who are implementing the initiative, other than the Spanish program?
Well, no, I think we'll, we'll input from what the school committee's expectations are for the programs that we've.
I think it'd be really, I, I, I would say be very cautious.
Okay.
In what you have just said as far as creating additional work for your instructional people. Because if in fact they have brought to you the initiative such as the iPad initiative, um, I think they also should be a part of, if not, the initiators of the criteria for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
They designed the program, they brought it to you.
Right, and all we're saying is we to make sure that it's brought to, you know, it's discussed.
Yeah, I mean.
Comes. We're not waiting.
Kinda go back and open an old wound, but to me, those objectives and decision criteria should have been established before the budget was ever approved. So the horse is out of the barn, if we're calling these things pilots and tests, that we're now going back and establishing objectives after the fact. So, a- absolutely, it should come from the practitioners.
Yeah.
And with frankly, you know, the accountability is gonna rest with the administration, not with us. And to me, it's more an FYI back to us unless there's some serious heartburn over the, the nature of the reporting process. But i- it's purely just a, a basic accountability issue to make sure that we're.
Right, the.
Right.
Prove the funds and that's being worth, you know.
So one of the things with some of the initiatives that we thought of is to have embedded in a set place within the school committee agendas, so that those are just a reporting out that can be expected, rather than having it in the ass, which you can just sort of expect that at certain points during the year, there'll be a reporting out.
That'd be great.
Which is, can be embedded in a report, it can be, you know what I mean, not that kind of thing.
Right, right. Oh, no, we're very sensitive not creating, we're, right.
Right.
But making sure there is something there.
Yeah, there's both going to go now.
Exactly, right, okay, good, we'll cross that one off, yeah.
It is, just to state the obvious, but it is also okay to say, oh, we tried this and this is not working so well.
Yeah, without a doubt, yes, I mean, this should not.
This is not about, this kind of.
Forcing the results.
Exactly.
It's about learning.
Right.
No, but just making, you know, that's still a reporting out though and that's just what we're doing, sure, right, we keep track of it, okay. On the, um, negotiation team, um, the other two school committees, I think, have appointed their reps, but one thing I wanted to bring forward was, um, I think the, the idea of trying to repeat last year's meeting schedule of Saturdays has really put a, a barrier up to people who might wanna volunteer. So I'd like to look into what other opportunities we have, if that's set in stone, or if we can explore other, cause I think that we're gonna have issues with Dover.
You, you have to have full days, you, you personally, and you cannot say, well, we'll do four hours this night and four hours the next night. A, it's gonna be the end of everybody's collective long workday, so think of it from that perspective and I just, you know, having lived it, you, you, you have to dedicate the time to.
Do it right.
Breaking the ice and getting to know each other and, and.
Could you split it though, or does it all have to be all four hours?
No, I, I'll tell you what, the other thing is, we as a school committee also have to realize it's not only our decision and it really, it resides with the negotiating team. And I hear what you're saying, Dawn, um, but this is something that the teachers prior to.
It's a commitment.
Me had said, we don't wanna do this at the end of a teaching day. We don't feel as though we can give it justice. So, um, the last couple of negotiations, it has been agreed upon that they will do these Saturdays. Now, the good news is that what I observed is that when you get in there, if there is something that is pressing in our watch, it was the boys' state soccer tournament. And everybody agreed, we'll stop at a certain time and we're all gonna go up to Worcester to see the, the kids do that. Um, I, I think there might have been something else that came up, or there may be some weekends that everybody on that team will say, I just, I really need to have this.
Take it off. Right.
Um, and the team will work with you on that, so, but it really belongs with the team itself.
Well, my team, just for clarity's sake, I don't, is, is teachers as well, I mean, it's not, okay, okay.
No, right, exactly, yeah, no, I, I realize that, right.
That's what I mean, the whole.
Right. But, you know, we sometimes you do things over and over and you, if you went back and reconsidered, still makes sense, is all I'm saying. Cause it, it opens up the door. I've heard the biggest issue is it's the time commitment and the time and we might not be getting the best people because of those two, is there any way to work around it?
I take offense to that.
I don't think so.
No, not you. We had you last year.
Have you gone through the cycle?
I know.
You know, the other reas-, the other thing that, that is difficult is that, um, we really need to identify the two members from Dover because we have already received the communication asking to open. And quite frankly, as Carl said, there needs to be a planning schedule that's put into place for school committee and your new superintendent. And that requires time and that again is something that scheduling, that group will come together and determine what's going to be the best time for them. Carl's team and mine said, we, we really need to do it early in the morning. So we all made the commitment, I forget what time it was, seven or something, six thirty, something like that, I mean, we made the commitment that that was the best time for all of us to meet.
Six weeks.
Yeah, six weeks, we did that. Um, and.
And then Saturdays, negotiations.
And Saturdays?
And when we would, you know, would, and have not gone through, but some kind of a hybrid model was, I think, what the thinking was, that as opposed to Saturdays, having it be a twelve to five during work.
The teachers do not want to take off from their teaching.
And you know what?
No, I understand that.
I want to.
I mean, they've been very emphatic about it.
I wouldn't, as a citizen, I wouldn't want, teachers are asked to step out for far too many things and, and this is an important issue. I don't mean to demean the importance of it, but this is not, this should not get in the way of the kids learning, personal opinion. I wouldn't wanna make that ask.
Yeah, you know, the, the other thing that you may want to do, I mean, Carl and I will not be on there, we can share our experiences.
It's easy for me to be blustered.
Well, I feel the same way, Carl. I mean, it's, it, and it can be as difficult, and we did have some very difficult issues, but I would also say that there are also rewards that are built into this, this form of negotiating this contract. It, it was very different for me. I've been through contract negotiations twice before. This is a different model. Um, but there was a lot of learning that took place and, um, I think you'll have also the opportunity on the joint meeting when we go into executive session to talk to some who have represented you before and to get a little more information.
Okay.
To discuss it any further would, would be difficult, but whomever would have an interest, I would really encourage you to talk with Carl or to myself. Um, I think I, Bob Springer had served on the last one and Bob was a very, um, good contributor in the negotiations.
Yeah, I.
Alan Williamson, I think, is probably the historian as far as.
Right.
I think we planned to do a, a debriefing with Alan and Carl. So as far as it stands, I've, I volunteered to be, um, one. I think we had issues with Tim and Lauren and Kristen, unless anything has changed.
Tim isn't here.
Well, I, I promised him, believe me.
Yeah, break that up.
Believe me, I promised him I would not, um, so it, it may come down to.
I didn't promise anything.
So can I, is it appropriate to ask who the, who the members are from the other committees, since it's public information?
Oh, yeah, so, um, Shelley and Claire from the region and Frank and Greg from Sherburne.
Correct. Frank Hess.
Okay.
So Claire from the, for the history. I mean, she'll be the one person who's had.
Now, the other thing is that you have representatives from the town and the good news for Dover is that you have, oh, Dover's voting tonight.
No, I mean, Dover's, Dover gets the vote.
No, no, Dover's trying to vote, yeah.
Well, Dover gets the vote this time, but they, you have two of your select people.
What does that mean?
Only what they switch, she gets the vote, between Sherburne and Dover, for the select.
Who have some experience. Carol has been served the last time and Carol didn't have the vote, cause only one town has a vote when you go through. Last time it was, um, Sherburne, so this time it's Dover's, but.
Do we know who the school, the, um, the selection is?
Oh, that could be interesting.
Yeah, that could be very interesting, because if, if Robin Hunter is elected.
That could be a really interesting. No, get Robin. Well, well, Carol's great too.
Carol's, well, either one of them. Now, Jim hasn't served, um, so my preference would be, and I, and I think the world of Jim, but my preference would be to be able to have either one of those women with the experience that they have.
Right, because we have so little.
Right, just keep looking out, right.
Right. So, all right, we got Dawn.
Yeah, was that you?
No.
Lauren, that's your vote.
That was my husband's friends, you're not raising your hand.
She's watching live on TV.
What about George?
Oh, is that true? Now, that's one of the best school committee. All right, Dawn, thank you.
So it may be that, uh, we have to meet in June before the joint, that we'll select our second person at that point. And I think it will still be okay, timing wise, right?
It should be fine.
Well, we will be calling a meeting of the, of this group right away.
Before June seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, really?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Does this have to be voted in a meeting in this session, in this form?
No, I don't think you've ever.
The appointment, okay.
I don't think it's been voted, but I think that we've at least had the members.
When we do commit, yeah, cause normally you do it when we did that. So it's not early though, we did it in June.
It's a rewarding experience.
No, it was made when we turned.
It was.
No, I was just gonna say, I, I, you know, I appreciate that it can be, you know, without getting into the issues of this particular negotiation, I'm not sure it's as complex as the last one because of the public knowledge now, the, the healthcare issues that we're trying to work through. You know, that's no guarantees that, you know, the prep time isn't comparable to where it was in the past. But, but, but the process is a, it, it's, it's a very fulfilling and enriching process, a great opportunity to, to get to know some high-quality, high-powered people uh, on the other side of the table and it's truly a very collaborative negotiating process. It is not, it's not impact bargaining, it, it's not us against them, it's, it's very much, we're doing this together. And, um, uh, you know, I feel like I made some good friends through the process and, and will always look positively on that despite, you know, my winning and, you know, whining and whinging about, uh, time commitment sometimes, but it's, it's, uh.
So when does this start?
Well, what we will do is those, those of you that are serving on that will come together. You all will then select somebody that'll be your chair and so that you can look at calendars, determine what type of a calendar you need, so that can be set up for you. And then there will be some additional things that you'll, you know, we'll share with you that morning.
So we'll have at least a week or ten days, cause I can't imagine if we do the meeting.
No, but I'm, but is this, is this really start in earnest in September and, and we're talking six, eight, we, what?
We, we completed the.
You're talking the negotiation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we completed the agreement.
But there's pre-work.
Pre-work, our team makes it during the summer.
During the summer.
For, for how, for a day for?
Depends on.
It depends. For that team, they did six weeks, I think, of early morning and then through the summer.
Yeah.
I think we got a little.
Yeah, I mean, it was, again, a lot of it was, we were trying to go through the due diligence around the, the healthcare implications. So we had to do a fair amount of benchmarking, a fair amount of, uh, soliciting of, of various schemes so that we could have options to, to discuss once we got to the table. That was probably the.
We probably can hold off on this conversation.
Yeah, no, I'm just, but it's.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll, we'll get some, we'll have some before you have a meeting scheduled, okay. Uh, June, uh, the June meeting.
Okay, Dawn, just as you know, because Stephen's never been through this, I will be calling a meeting, I will send it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and it probably will be within a week.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll fill that spot. Okay, on June nineteenth, just agenda items, um, we'll have the school improvement plan, we'll have the chikering handbook. We'll actually do committee assignments at that point, because, um, A three and O B official, which you should go get, we both need to go get sworn in in the, sometime before.
It doesn't have to be in the morning, cause.
No, it doesn't have to be in the morning, exactly. Not as quickly, but as soon as you can, cause they get antsy over there. Uh, we'll approve the DSEF grants.
Have those been announced yet?
No, it hasn't been resolved yet.
They're meeting tonight, I think.
No, they're.
Tomorrow, okay.
And we have to approve those because they go into that gift fund?
No, I think they changed it. There, there, there's some difficulties that they were dealing with.
I'm only wondering why we don't approve Dover PTO funds, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Because it doesn't go through, they, they spend their own money.
Okay.
Although the DSEF grant, they don't give us the money, they pay through their checks.
Yeah, the other committees have started adopting, yeah, the grants, so positive grants are going through the region.
So we should probably, so should we have the PTO maybe present the, the budget at the June meeting and that kind of, that we can, is that a way of accepting their contribution to the school in a public forum?
Can you let Kristy know that?
I think to be consistent, we probably ought to have that up. I think to be consistent, we probably ought to have that out in the open.
Yeah. Any other items?
For June?
Yep.
So, handbook.
School improvement plan.
Isn't the process that we used for the handbook last year that worked well, but I now could not tell you what that process was. But what we did last June was much better than what we had done the June, what you guys had done the June before, was my understanding.
Well, I think we made so many changes, hopefully we're not have that many changes.
We have, we have tweaks.
Right, you have tweaks, but as far as feedback from us, because so much has been cleaned up in the last two edits. So, what they did is they still sent us out the edits, um, I think what we did was just send all of our comments. Don't bring them to the night, bring them to Terry, she consolidated them all into a nice.
Yes, okay.
Sheet, and then we went through and this we took, this we didn't take, that type of thing.
And we approved it based on the recommended changes.
Exactly.
Right. That he, without having to have them done.
Exactly, right.
But, just remember it was.
Yeah, well, we, there were, but we've cut down the number, hopefully they've cut down the number of edits, um, that we'll have. Okay, on, um, I didn't put on here, but just for the June joint meeting, just so people know, we will have world language, just to bring all three, um, committees up to date on that. We'll be approving the superintendent's, um, we'll just finalize the meeting schedule, because each committee has talked about the meeting schedule in their meeting, so we'll just approve that. And then we'll go into executive session to talk about the MOU matrix.
Yeah, Denise Lonigan will be giving you an overview of the MOU, and then you probably have, you know, conversations you'd like to have.
So, we just need to make sure that you, that we post a Dover school committee meeting probably for six o'clock. That night. Yeah, because we'll have to do our reorg so that we have our unit fifty members, yeah.
So, not six fifteen, six thirty?
No.
Six o'clock is probably easier, just six fifteen, because people start coming in.
Carl, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'd like to thank the, in a very, very, uh, inappropriate comment, I'm sure, but the voters today decided to take down the Seapark project by a four to one margin, and I would like to thank them for that effort.